Called us Becker County Board of County Commissioners meeting the session and if you have a phone or something to make this noise, please put it on silent or vibrate. And if you want to speak to the board, if you fill out a public comments card back by the front chief on the back wall, you fill that out and get it to one of the staff members. I don't have anything as of right now. We give you appropriate time to speak on the public comments section of our agenda. And with that, I will ask Commissioner Mobley to do the prayer and the pledge for us. If you would stand, please.
Yes, sir. Dear heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight, Lord. Lord, we just pray right now for all of our first responders in our county, Lord. We just put them up before you tonight, Father. We pray for every citizen in our county, Lord, that you just be with them, Father. Lord God, we just pray right now for this board, for all of the members up here tonight, Father, Lord, just to make your will and to follow in your will and make the best decision for the county and the citizens here. Lord God, right now, we just pray for rain for our county, Lord. Lord, we know it's dry and we just pray right now for the hazards that it presents. Lord, we just ask you to be upon us, Father. Lord, we love you and thank you for everything you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord, we stand as a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. My favorite part of the meeting. Yes, sir. We'll go into our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. I know there's been some changes, Ms. Murphy. If you want to go ahead and speak to those, we can make a motion.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I will. If you guys will, please make note that item number six, emergency management update, will be removed from this agenda. We were not able to have our call with FEMA this week, so there is no up-to-date information to provide. Also, just as a simple update, item number seven will be presented by me instead of John Blanchard. And then item number one for final hearing under our public hearing will be removed and be rescheduled for a later date.
Thank you, ma'am.
Move to approve the agenda with the modifications as indicated.
Second. A motion in second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move into our next item on the agenda, which is our elected officials section of the, but I'm going to let Ms. Brooklyn, who's going to give us an update on the ARPA funds.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Brooklyn Neville. I'm the new finance director. Thank you, Chairman, for giving me the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome.
I appreciate all of your time. If you don't mind, I have some packets of information for you all regarding the ARPA fund, just to give you an example of what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, on page one of your packet shows the ARPA fund and all the expenses that have came out of the ARPA fund for the Sanderson Fire Station. So, I understand that last meeting, the board discussed the ARPA fund and its ability to fund stage two of the NavSports complex. Since that meeting, I've spent the last week digging into this fund, and I would like to report you all my findings. So, like I said, on page one is the Sanderson Fire Station expenses that have came out of ARPA. The total is 1.5 million dollars, about.
Is this considered page one?
I'm sorry. Page two is what I was trying to do.
I think that's the summary sheet, yeah.
Page one is the summary sheet. That shows you what is in the ARPA fund currently. You can see in green, the two numbers at the bottom, 2 million dollars each, is the two payments that we received. And then in red are all the expenses we've received by year. So, in total, there's 150,000 dollars left in that fund. But the discrepancy comes mainly from two projects, one being the Sanderson Fire Station and one being the NavSports Complex. So, these are what the two packets cover and why there should be more money in there had these projects been spent differently, which I'll explain. So, sorry about that confusion.
It's fine.
First page, Sanderson Fire Station, ARPA. Then if you look over the second page, these are the Sanderson Fire Station expenses that came out of state appropriations. So, we got 850,000 dollars in state appropriations to cover the Sanderson Fire Station. But of that, only 200,000 dollars was spent. So, if you flip over to the last page, I have a little summary for you. On the right side, you can see the ARPA expenses. On the left side, you can see the expenses that came out of 850,000 dollar state appropriation. So, there are 637,000 dollars left unspent of that grant that really should have been in ARPA. So, I think it can be fixed. I'm working with CKH, our CPA consulting firm, to see how we can move the expenses out of ARPA and into the EMS grant fund to zero out that fund before we expense ARPA. And really what should have been done is we should have had the general fund, the county, front that money up until 850,000 dollars was spent and then started dipping it in ARPA. So, there's really just a fund difference. And then similarly, the NavSports Complex, second part of your packet. The first page shows the ARPA funds that were expensed on the NavSports Complex. Beginning part in purple, the numbers in purple are the non-NAV expenses, but the numbers in blue are the NAV expenses. It totals 471,000 dollars. Then on the second page are the NAV funds spent out of the state appropriations. The total is 232,000 dollars. So, we are receiving a grant for the NAV Sports Complex, excuse me, of 600,000 dollars. So, it's similar logic, but we just haven't received the money yet. But we should have fully expensed that money from a bookkeeping standpoint, fully expensed 600,000 dollars before we dipped into ARPA. So, it's kind of like money still left on the table, similar to the Sanderson Fire Station, of 367,000 dollars. So, in total, between the two, ARPA should have about a million dollars more in it. And it really wasn't like a issue of the money went missing or anything like that. It was just expense. The timing was off. It should have, we should have expensed the grants first, dipped into ARPA, same thing with NAV funds. So, like I said, I'm working with CKH, the CPA consulting firm, to make sure that whatever entries we make to fix this are legal, and if the auditors pull that transaction next year, we'll have adequate documentation to back up that entry. So, yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a little bit of clarification for that.
So, number one, thanks to Brooklyn for doing that. That's a lot of work. She and I have talked a couple of times over the last couple of weeks about this. I know she's spent a lot of effort on it. So, basically, what happened was instead of our, like our cash fund floating these grants first, right, like that's typically what we do, is that we don't get.
Joe Avenue.
Exactly, exactly. So, we always do grants and we get reimbursed at the end. So, instead of the cash account or general fund floating these grants until reimbursement, ARPA did. So, the entirety of those projects was charged to ARPA instead of the grant first, and then only the ARPA matched funds being charged to ARPA. And so, like Brooklyn's saying, like there's no over expenditures, there's not, you know, misappropriations, it was just not allocated appropriately in the system. And it's finding a way to correct that from some of those could have been from a few budget years past. So, it's finding a way of being able to do that. But that's basically what's happened, is that, like I said, instead of, you know, a GL being set up for, you know, a fund being set up for the Sanderson Fire Station, and all of those funds from the state appropriation, the 900,000 dollars being charged to that first funded by the general fund, they did it all to ARPA as one big project.
This is the same thing that we said in March.
Yes, sir.
That has happened.
Yes, sir. And so, like I said, Brooklyn's working really diligently.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. On how to figure this out, yeah.
Because me and Sarah had this conversation before. We knew what the problem was, that we can't get into the financial system and fix it like somebody says we can. But we already knew what had been done. We didn't, I don't think this board ever intended to say that the money was taken or somebody's got it in their pocket. That was not, we knew it was misappropriated. And that's what we said in March. Now, while we're here, this far into it, getting this update, I really appreciate the effort you put in this week.
Thank you.
To clarify on what we already knew.
Well, and I think we'll be able to fix it. I think we'll be able to have the funds in ARPA that we need to finish out our projects.
And that's why, the next part, I was going to ask, all these has already been into the audit stage. We've been through the audit, we've approved the audit. So, how these funds is going to be transferred around now?
So, yeah, that's the big obstacle, I think, is the fact that most of these invoices are 2023 and 2024.
Right.
So, that's the thing, is like I don't know about going back into years. But I spoke with another CPA, not the CKH, the consulting firm, and she says we think, she thinks we should be able to just make a journal entry to move, not really move funds, but just move expenses. So, move it, like, for example, with the Sanderson Fire Station, how there was a 630,000 dollar balance in there that was unspent of the grant, just move 637,000 dollars of expenses out of ARPA and back into the EMS fund and zero out that grant, and then the ARPA fund balance will come up.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I have a question. This may be for Sarah as well. The ARPA funds, we received those funds front-ended.
We did. It was cash in the bank.
ARPA was.
Yes, sir.
The state appropriations is not the same way.
No, sir.
So, state appropriations, you have to go back and submit for reimbursement.
Yes.
So, all of this has now got to go back and be submitted?
No, so we've gotten reimbursement on that.
How have you got reimbursement on it? If we, how did we get reimbursement from the state if we didn't submit the invoices and the paid invoices and things?
We did. We submitted paid invoices. It's just on our end, the paid invoices came from ARPA, and they should have came from the general fund.
Wait, wait, wait. Hang on a minute. We submitted invoices to the state of Florida.
Yes, sir.
Reimbursement from the state appropriations.
They don't need to see what.
Just let me finish my question.
Go ahead.
We invoiced the state office for reimbursements and received funding back from the state office, but yet the accountant's side still booked it against ARPA?
No, sir. So, the booking against ARPA would be before the reimbursement was done. So, we did that through construction. We asked for reimbursement at the completion of the project. So, the Sanderson Fire Station has been paid back to the county, and the NavSports Complex, we're in the process of doing that in the middle now.
Wait, wait. Let's deal with the one.
Okay.
Sanderson Fire Department Fire Station.
Yes, sir.
We did the work.
Yes, sir.
We invoiced who to get our money?
The state of Florida Division of Fire Marshals.
So, we prepared, we, well, the grant. We billed for the grant, the appropriations. And Brooklyn, thank you for your efforts here with this. My concerns are not with what you're doing here. I appreciate the information. I wanted to understand because the county and the finance department, under the clerk, expended funds through a normal contract method, that office, I assume the finance department is the one that submits the invoicing and everything for the reimbursement from the state.
On that one, I believe they did do the reimbursement request.
Somebody, the county's got to submit the request, so.
Yeah. Did finance submit the reimbursement request on the fire station?
Yeah. So, they submitted the request to the state.
Yes, sir.
We got the money back from the state.
Yes, sir.
And yet, we still booked the expense against ARPA.
Yes, sir, but it would have been done before the reimbursement was made. We just got reimbursement.
Absolutely. They booked it against ARPA.
Yes, sir.
And then turned around and billed it against the state.
Yes, sir.
Got the money from the state and never went back to correct the incorrect bookings to ARPA.
Yes, sir. That's a correct statement.
So, it's not, it's not a fact that they didn't realize they were booking it wrong? It's the fact that it was ignored when it was done wrong because they booked it against ARPA and submitted invoicing to the state? That's what's happened on both of them. That's why it's out of whack. Again, this is one that goes back to the way that finances are being handled. This is pre, Brooklyn said my concerns are not with yours. This is very helpful to understand what's happened. But if you were, if that office took steps and booked it against the state grant and received the revenue from the state grant, they should immediately have known to adjust the expenses to go against the state grant. So, my question comes back to this as well. When, how many payments did we receive from the state?
One.
And there goes the problem. How many years was the Sanderson Fire Station ongoing?
Two.
It was, it was two years or so.
Yeah.
And for two years, we were expending resources and not getting reimbursed from the state and expending our money, because at the end of the day, ARPA was our money sitting in the bank account that should have been drawing some money, and we have continued to spend resources, our county resources, because nobody took the steps to, one, manage the grant, and, two, get reimbursement on a timely basis. We should have been submitting at a minimum of quarterly for all the expenses received. So, again, I go back to my point, the way it has been managed in the past, from managing grants to the financing, managing the way the grants were done and reimbursed, has been a complete dismal failure, is the best way I can say it. This is, I appreciate this, because at least it does at least provide the information that it wasn't, which I wouldn't never, I never suspected people taking money. That's not, that hasn't been my concern. But this is critical in how we manage grants, how we keep up with our finances, how we understand where our balances are, for us to be sitting in a position now where we were anticipating having money to move another project forward, and we really can't until this is all resolved. And it impacts multiple years audits, how it was done. And that's because it was not handled properly, when it wasn't handled properly, the way it was invoiced, how it was expensed, and it wasn't handled correctly with having regular, routine invoicing to these grants. And that's why I want the grant spreadsheet that we put together.
Yes.
I want to start seeing that updated because of this exact kind of thing. The same thing, I remind you, this is exactly the same thing happened with the SAFRA grant. Three years that we covered them expenses, three years, and after the grant had expired, when we were still within that 90, 120-day period to invoices, did we submit and get one invoice? And the previous finance director indicated, well, they had multiple attempts to try to get that emails, but none of that has been produced. Simply saying, the grant management side and the way it's been handled, this is another example showing your predecessors have certainly not been successful in managing the role. So, I appreciate you sharing the information, Brooklyn, but it doesn't change the fact that there's been colossal failures up to this point.
Yeah. I'm really hopeful that it will change with the hiring of grant manager, because I think it's just a lot on Sarah, on the finance department, to try to manage these grants coming in. There's a lot of them. And I talked to the finance department, who does the POs for these and handles the invoices, and she told me that whenever people send in POs, that they're the ones who say, this comes out of ARPA, this comes out here. So, her job is just to say, okay, I'm pulling out of this fund. And I don't think she was ever made aware of this grant. So, I think it was just a communication issue, really. And so, I'm hoping with the hiring of grant manager and increased communication, like stuff like this will happen in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is our public comments section. I don't see anyone in the, no speaker cards?
Yes, sir.
I don't see anyone in the public who wants to address the board, so we'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda items. If anyone had a chance to take a look at those, if so, I'll take a motion to.
Make a motion to approve.
Sir. Have a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is approval of the task order for Pittman Engineering, 125 Bridge. Mr. Lee, you're up for three items, so don't go nowhere.
Good evening, Commissioners. Okay, tonight, I'm coming before you with a task order from Pittman Engineering, and this is for repair and project management for the Kirkland Branch Bridge that undermined, box culvert that undermined, and this is for 26,825 dollars. And this is so we can get this thing, the design started, and get a contractor onboard to, which we probably already have the contractor, we just got to get him to go to give us the right numbers and everything, but that's just to get this thing rolling.
Yes. Quick question. This is one that was originally in our emergency funds, but because this route is part of the FHWA, it got kicked over to them, whatever. Do, as of this point, are we expecting to get any reimbursement whatsoever? Is this just fully on us?
No, sir. When FHWA came back and said what they did about not being able to repair it, DOT stepped up and provided this. So, we won't see anything from the federal government on it. The state has picked up that expense completely.
That's fantastic. I appreciate that, okay?
Yes, sir.
Most prayers of the board.
Move to approve as presented.
Sir.
A motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two, approval of road submission for FDOT funding.
Okay, this next one is for our local government program solicitations for year ending 2023 or year 2023. We got to pick three roads. I've done this plenty of times, but we got to pick three roads, and the road department is recommending the following. Stillbridge Road from State Road 121 to the boat ramp. We got a multiple 60-inch culvert replacement on Cruz Road and construction of paving on Tom Norman Road. That's the three that we are recommending. We also threw in there resurfacing of County Road 139B, which has been on the list before, and the complete, and to finish the paving on Fred Harvey, which has not been on anything yet. That would be to finish up where the last paving ended up to get it all the way over to Calpin Road.
Stillbridge Road.
But y'all, this is, this is just our recommendations. If y'all got something totally different, that's, we're just, we just got to know what we got to do so we can start getting that paperwork in line to submit everything.
I have a question for you on Stillbridge Road. How's it compared to Noah Rawlson Road?
Stillbridge is starting to unravel on the edges, and we're getting more and more homes that are actually getting built up out there. Noah Rawlson is, right now, really, Noah Rawlson's got some, it's got some potholes on it that we're trying to keep up with, but compared to Stillbridge, it's, Stillbridge is a long road though, so.
Noah Rawlson's not just potholes. There's, it is severely rutted.
Yeah, the ruts are starting to.
It is severely rutted in some very bad locations in that area, and I know this is one that come up, your predecessor even brought it up to us at some point in the past with it needing to be repaired. So, I think we got to start taking a serious look at Noah Rawlson Road because of its condition. There's also a section of that that goes underwater on a regular basis. It's got a high water table sitting there, so there is portions that go underwater. I'm not trying to, we're not going to try to raise that, but I'm just telling you, there's some, and if we don't start repairing those potholes and things, we're going to start having base failures. It's pretty bad. It's going to require a complete reconstruction. So, that's when I think we ought to take a close look at trying to resurface it because of its needs. Now, I.
Resurface without raising anything to get rid of?
I'm not asking trying to raise it, no. It's been like that for many years. It can still function. It's only when it's really heavy, really wet, that that becomes a little bit of a challenge. But the main thing is getting that road resurfaced, because we are having, there is significant rutting. Besides the potholes, there's significant rutting in that road. And if you drive down it, when there is any type of rain activity, it is, it becomes an issue of concern for me for hydroplaning, so.
Okay. I'll second that. That road, it is pretty rough.
That road hasn't been touched since it was built, and that's been, that was.
It was way before me.
Long time ago.
Okay.
25-plus years ago. That one, I really think we need to take a look at.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Multiple 60-inch culvert replacement on Cruz Road.
I'm not sure where the 60-inch culvert replacements are on Cruz Road. Are they failing or what's going on?
They're about quarter mile north of 125. You, you, they're, they're.
Is that at the bottom of the dip, that first dip?
At the bottom of the, yes, sir.
How many, how many 60 inches?
Four. Four. Is, is that the best thing to go back to? Is four quad 60 inch? Well, in something like this, we might, it might be better, I mean, it would be up to an engineer to look at it, but box culvert would probably be a better option there.
Precased box culvert in there.
It would sound like a box culvert would be the go-to on that one.
That one, I'll tell you, that, that has the potential, but, well, consistent bridge So, not to divert off of this subject, because we need to focus on what we want to submit, but I also, we need to start thinking about the list, because we have the local option gas tax that becomes effective starting, starting January 1. We agreed that we would not start expending any resources on that until we had at least a quarter, three months plus worth of data to know what it was going to get before we start putting together. So, we need to start thinking about what we might do with some of those funds for improvements as well. And I think there are some restrictions on exactly how you can spend those, but we need to, we need to start thinking through what those restrictions are and start coming up with a plan for doing that. And the reason I mention that is I don't know if any of these might be a better candidate for that versus the state's resurfacing dollars. Okay? But I, I'm, I do want to see Noah Rawlson Road on here, because it is in, it is, it is in bad shape. And I've been down Stillbridge Road as well. I'm not saying it's not an issue, but I will tell you, I believe Noah Rawlson. I'm not saying it's not an issue, but I will tell you, I believe Noah Rawlerson Road is in much greater need for it to get to a point you can't.
Commissioner, I think when we pass that ordinance, we just copied the statute, so if you look at the ordinance, it tells you the restrictions.
Okay. And we're talking about for fiscal year 2030 at this point? Is there five years from now?
Yes.
They typically program these three years out. It's for the, it's for their new work program for years 26 through 30, but it, they typically program most of this in the third year of that cycle. They don't program five years out typically.
Okay. Well, you, I mean, I would lean on your expertise on this with FDOT and what you think could get pushed through.
It's, most of these will meet, because they're, they're, they're going to fund them with either SIGP scrap or SCOP, which is really predominantly resurfacing SCOP. You can do new pavement, which is not what we're asking for here. So, these are really, most, any of these would be able to qualify.
Okay.
So, you know, my suggestion is focus on, and by the way, that the box culvert, or excuse me, the culvert replacement on Cruz Road is, is there, are they failing in a read? What was the need for?
They're starting to, they're metal and they're starting to rot. We've got a, we've got a plan in place to actually go in and repair and put, basically, we'd shorten up the, because the arches are in good shape. It's the bottoms that are starting to go. And we've got a design that was, put rebar down all along the bottom, and then four or six or eight inch slab to cover the entire bottom to make them last longer. So, there, it's something we have been looking at.
Just to note, crawl drains and metal probably is not the best approach.
Exactly.
It's a little bit more to put concrete in on a crawl drain, but it's going to last a whole lot longer than.
Box culvert is definitely the way to go on that.
Okay.
But that's, it's down there. It's a deep one.
I would suggest that we add Noah Rawlerson Road and found 121 is, or Stillbridge Road on there, and I would focus predominantly on the surfacing type projects. That's where you're going to get the most likely approvals for that. That's, that'd be my suggestion. But Noah Rawlerson, Stillbridge, and then.
It does need it.
I'm thinking the same thing. I'm thinking the resurfacing of Stillbridge, I agree with Noah Rawlerson, but more utilization of people in the county will be on Stillbridge Road going to the new boat ramp. Noah Rawlerson's more of a community. It's not a main thoroughfare. So, my priority would be the, would be the Stillbridge Road, but then Noah Rawlerson right after it. And then the 139B project after that.
I can live with that, because my biggest concern with Noah Rawlerson is you're right, that it's not as busy, but on the same token, once the road starts to fail.
Right.
If you don't get it repaired.
Yeah.
When it starts to deteriorate, it gets to a point to where it rapidly deteriorates, and then it's a very expensive project to rehab it.
So, I'm not saying no.
No, I'm saying.
No, Rawlerson. But I'm saying that the utilization of the community is, is going to be to the Stillbridge Road, because everybody uses that, they got to use that to get to the river.
I would, then, I'm good with that adjustment to Stillbridge, Noah Rawlerson, and 139B.
Yeah.
I'm glad to put forth the recommendation to move forward, but put all of those in that order.
I would agree.
As a motion.
Stillbridge, Noah, and 139.
Yeah.
In that order.
Yeah.
Because all we do is put them in, and they reach in, and they, they pick and choose, so it does.
They do.
They look at our, what we, how we rate them, but then they're going to come in with their funding, and then they're going to do what they can do.
Right.
But our rating does mean something, and that's the reason we need to put them in an order that we rate. And I agree with Commissioner Minus.
Since they're all, since they're all very similar.
Right.
They would kind of go with our ask, most likely, since they're all very similar type roadways, some type request. Okay? As a motion?
I have a motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number three, which is approval of the SAFEROUT, the schools' submission.
Okay, this is, I'm not exactly sure how to even bring this to you. This is, this is, Commissioner Hartley asked me about this a couple of years ago, about this, he heard something about the SAFERoutes to school. So, we've been looking at it and following it, and finally, it came up this year. And, but this is for a solicitation for 2032. It's about a fifteen-page application. It's pretty rough to go through, because we have to have meetings on it, we have to invite the public, X amount of people have to sign up for it, we have to have all of our routing, exactly why we're doing it, are we incorporating the library, how many schools, or, you know, there's a lot of stuff we got to do with this, and it's six years out. So, my thinking was, we need to go ahead and at least put it together. If we can get it together and get it in, if it gets accepted, great. Between now and then, we come up with a different route to, a different way to pay for it, we can always back out of this at a later date, is my thinking. But if we don't do it this way, well, we'll see what another grants come up, then we're going to be waiting another year or two years to see if we can even apply for it again.
Yes. My suggestion is to reach over to the school and coordinate with them.
Oh, there's a law of coordination, got to go there.
And get their inputs on it, because at the end of the day, it is routes to schools.
Right.
So, they should be able to tell you predominantly where it's needed the most, where students are walking the most, where it's getting there, because this is typically used for funding sidewalks and things like that.
Right, right.
It's predominantly what it's for. It's not a huge, there's not a lot of dollars in this, but it's really focused on doing improvements to get kids that is trying to get to schools, walking type. So, it focuses a lot on sidewalks and crosswalks, intersection improvements and things that makes it safe. And so, the school could probably be a really good source of guidance on where, on, on some options and information.
Some of the schools have actually called and asked about the program over the last couple of years, and we just keep telling them, we're working to wait for them to get it, so.
And I did receive an email from DOT about this, from the director of the SAFE Schools, and our person at the school got the same email with the application and what all we need to do. So, they're on board with the whole thing.
Okay.
And he was very, you know, helpful in getting, telling us, but the application is quite lengthy.
Yes, it is.
There is a lot you have to do.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I did have a conversation with the superintendent about this. So, Commissioner Hartley and I have talked about this for several years about the high school. So, we know that there are sidewalks that end around West Side, but they don't extend any further towards the high school, and there's the most foot traffic on the side of the right of ways there. So, I did have a conversation with the school superintendent a few months ago, and asked DOT also to send that information to you guys as well. So, I would agree, I think that the school district is on board, most likely. They may have another suggestion, but the high school has been talked about and was supportive by the school district to move forward with an application for that.
Commissioner Minus?
I'm good. Thank you.
Well, everybody's got to be on board, or it won't, it won't pass.
Right.
So, you need, from us, you just need an approval to submit the grant.
Basically, y'all just got to say, see if you can get it. And then that's, that's the only approval we're looking for, because we still got to go through the entire process.
I move that, Chris, see if we can get it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Chris. We'll move to our next item on the agenda, approval of task force NFPS. Ms. Donna?
All right. Good evening, good evening. So, this is something that we talked about at pretty good length back during the budget workshops and during the budget cycle. As you remember, last meeting, you were presented with the data and analysis information from Northwater Professional Services. We had, we had applied for the CP TA grant. We did hear back that we did not receive the seventy-five thousand dollar grant. It looked as if they kind of took a different approach this year to where they, where they applied that funding. So, we had held off on this item to see if we got that funding. We did budget for the full amount, just in case we didn't. So, this is in the budget for this year. We budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for this. The task, the task work order that you have is for a hundred and ten thousand for the base, the base task work order. And then there is an additional option for an update for the future land use map that's an additional ten thousand dollars. So, that would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars total if you guys were to approve both of those items. And then that leaves us an additional five thousand dollars. You will see that there is, you know, if we requested anything outside of that scope of work, it would be billed for a hundred and forty dollars an hour. So, that additional five thousand dollars would be to cover anything that we may encounter that's not in the task work order. So, that's what you have in front of you this evening. And Northwater Professional Services is here this evening, if you have any questions directly for them.
Any questions or comments? Not what's the prayers of the board.
This was, I got a question and comment.
Yes.
This, this was the, what we talked about last meeting.
Yes, same.
Yeah, so that, what you saw last week was the first phase of that.
Yeah, I mean, this is something we have to have. Right.
Yes, sir. You didn't see, you did not see this earlier, because we had applied for a seventy-five thousand dollar grant.
Gotcha.
And if we were approved for that grant, you would need to see it in three phases instead of two. So, the grant funding would have been phase two, and then whatever was left, phase three. So.
Yeah, if it's something we got to do, and we got the money to do it. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
My only question with that recommendation, is it for, is it with the additional option or?
For the one-ten or the one-twenty?
Yeah.
One-twenty.
Okay.
Is that's what required?
So, we're.
Yes.
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 One-twenty.
Yes.
I mean.
We need to update it.
Yes, we do.
Just chief, chief, approval of the MOU with a BCFR in City McClinney.
Yeah, this is just an MOU allowing the city fire EMTs and paramedics that are on their fire apparatus to practice under the supervision of a BCFR paramedic or under medical control, which is in the document. This document, if you read through it, is created by Dr. Barker. It's just to try to make, facilitate, you know, a little bit better working relationship. Right now, the city does not have a medical director. They're working on getting their own medical director. So, by the letter of the law, they technically can't operate as an EMT or paramedic until they're under the supervision of a medical director. This would allow that. So, in other words, it's a force multiplier for our, our folks in the field. If they need somebody to start an IB or something like that, they can say, hey, you can do that under law. So, it will include some, some joint training and things like that. Again, the spirit of cooperation, working better together, and, and we're just seeking approval. It's got to be, go in front of their board too, to be approved by the city council.
Move to approve the request as presented with a modification in section four point two. It says medical, county medical direction shall oversee the application. I'm pretty sure it's supposed to be county medical director.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So, motion to approve that, that correction.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Quick question. How's things going with the new medical director?
Great. Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate a bit, what's, what has taken place since October 1?
He's been very involved in our training. We actually, when we put in the new ventilators, and there was actually a procedure that was kind of new to us, that was taught, and he was upfront and leading that. And within the last week, that procedure was built, used to save somebody's life. So, and he was on the forefront of that happening, so.
I ask the question simply for this, just to make the statement. One, it's my understanding so far that he's been there, he's been providing training, he's been riding on several, on a number of times with the services or whatever, and now this is another indication that he's reached out to, again, increase that service. So, I appreciate everybody embracing that. I appreciate his efforts to, to work really closely with staff and make sure that we are, are providing elevated services as well. So, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yes. Item number seven, approval of the contract amendment PSAP. Sarah, you got this one?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, presented before you tonight is an amendment to this contract. It does not change any terms other than the date. It was extended at the state's request to February 2nd, 2026. This is part of our E911 agreement. Again, no changes to the equipment, to grant totals or anything like that. It simply just changes the date to February 2nd, 2026, and we recommend approval on that.
What's the prayers of the board? Move we approve the date change to February 2nd, 2026.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I have fifteen minutes, and I have one more item. Do we think we can make it fifteen, or we need to take a short break?
I don't think we can cover fifteen. We've been thinking too much.
Hmm?
Knowing us, it's going to go more than fifteen.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, because.
We can start with just knowing our.
We could go at fifteen, but.
I don't know. I don't want to take a chance. Mr. Sarah?
Yes, sir.
Can you go ahead and give us your pending business report?
I can, certainly. All right, we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. COA bus wash. Again, this is still just being held as a placeholder until that reimbursement has been received to the county. We have not gotten that funding just yet. Moving on down our list into the boat ramp, we actually did get today an amendment to our first contract for construction. That's our construction phase. So, that grant was supposed to end in December of this year, but we have kept FWC involved through our process with FEMA, and they have agreed to give us about a two and a half year extension to allow for the construction of the new boat ramp. And then there was also some deliverable changes, just, there was some references to lighting and things like that, and so they're going to take that out. So, you'll see that on your next agenda for approvals. I did just get that this afternoon. So, we're really thankful to FWC for being able to give us that extension. So, we, we got an update from our contractor today on some survey work that he's doing, so I sent that on to FWC. We've been doing that periodically, so they know what the process looks like, and they've been supportive of that relocation as well. So, we'll keep moving forward on that part. Council on Aging Senior Life Enrichment Center, I know some work had been done to the air conditioner systems commissioner Anderson. I haven't gotten any more phone calls about that, so I hope that that's still holding out and doing okay. But we did get the letter from the COA with the full list, and I know Rich is working on some notification.
Has that list been provided to the contractor also?
Yeah. The list to the contractor?
That letter?
No, sir, it has not, not on my end. I don't know that the COA has...
We need to make sure he receives the same, all corresponding, he needs to be in, he needs to know what the list was.
My intention was to attach that letter to Mr. Commando's letter.
Well, we can do that. But I just, I don't want him to, them to be blind.
No, sir, I agree.
With what's going on here.
Yes, sir.
And then it hasn't been as hot.
Mm-hmm.
The temperature has changed.
Right.
So that usually solves a lot of the problems with air conditions during this time of the year.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens when the sun comes back out.
Yes, sir.
And get smoking again.
I did have a conversation with, with the contractor last week about a project, an unrelated project. He stopped by the office, and he did tell me that he had been reaching out to Carrier, I think was, is the company that actual equipment's from. And so he had requested that they send someone, that he had exhausted all of his efforts and he had requested.
Yeah, I think they need a special, specialty person here that knows what they're doing. I ain't saying they don't know what they're doing, but evidently, somebody don't know what they're doing.
Right, something's wrong somewhere.
Something's not installed right or...
Yes, sir.
Or replace it.
Whatever it takes, we need to get somebody in there and get operational.
Right, yes, sir.
And we don't wanna wait till July when it's quitting again. It needs to be fixed.
I'll follow up with Rich to see where he's at on that letter for you.
Thank you.
Moving down the list, we don't, no updates on the Kyler Fire Station. Again, that's just a placeholder on that project. The NAB Sports Complex, again, thanks to Brooklyn for coming and talking about ARPA at the beginning of this meeting. That was very helpful, useful information. So hopefully we can complete that reconciliation, and when Little League season wraps up this summer, that can be a project that we tackle. But we do appreciate your efforts, again, on doing that for us. Courthouse Generator Appropriation Project, if any of you came in from US 90 and you looked at the end of our building, there's a brand new piece of equipment that looks really pretty on the end of our building. So take a look at that. The surprise on that delivery was the switch as well. So we were told that that would not be delivered until a later date, and when they got here, both pieces of equipment were here. So now the contractor is working on, on the real work, right? Like waiting on the equipment was, was long and tedious, but again, the contractor has started the process to get that hooked up. We're super excited about that, and again, the fact that the switch was delivered as well was, was great news for us. Moving on down the list, I have not talked to Mr. Moore this week. Ladonna, is he coming to your office for permitting? I know he and Brian had met.
He has, so they were going back and forth.
Ms. Ladonna? We need to get your recorder.
There's some concerns about the plans, I know, and Brian made some comments on what he would need to see on the plans, and they were working on that.
The plans that were submitted, there were a few changes that needed to be made. Some of what was submitted seemed to have come from another project. They're, but they seem to be sorting that.
So we're in the process of...
Yes, yes. It's something to do with the trusses, the trusses that were submitted.
Yeah.
But it is moving.
Okay.
Yes. And if you wanna say it there, Ladonna, the last item is the permit software.
Yeah, so I have, I've asked on multiple occasions for kind of a schedule, and I keep getting told that, sure, we'll get you that, and I have not received that yet. So Clint and I have had some conversations, and I know Clint has been talking with them, making sure that they understand that we are ready on our end with the server requirements. So unfortunately, the ball's kind of in their court right now. We're waiting on an update on their end.
Ms. Sarah, if we have staff draft the letter and have it certified and sent over there to them, that they received it?
Yes, sir.
That we need some type of schedule?
Yes, sir.
This phone call stuff don't seem to be working.
Right.
So let's just start documenting how many times we've contacted them, even if you've sent an email. What's your way you want it?
It is, it's email, yes, sir.
I just want, we need to make sure that this moves on. This has been dragging on for years.
Yes, sir.
So it needs to move on.
It does. We'll do it. We'll add that to Rich's list.
Mr. Chairman, before we take a break, can I, can I come back to the subject we talked about earlier?
Yes, sir.
And I wanna do that before Brooklyn, as Brooklyn takes off. One of the things that we just, from your discussion earlier, pointed out that for the appropriations for the NAB expenses, that we had $800,000 appropriation. We spent about $232,000, I think it was, excuse me, six, the state appropriation was $600,000?
On NAB, yes, sir.
And we spent 230 some thousand on it, right?
On paper, yes, sir.
On paper. So that still leaves us with, in the neighborhood of $350,000 left. Okay? My question is, instead of going back, trying to go through reconciliations and fight with all of that, these state appropriations could go for Phase Two, could it not? It's all for the, it's all for the same complex.
Well, we've already...
We broke it down in Phase One and Two. I don't think the appropriations did, did it?
No, sir, but Phase Two on our end was part of the...
Everybody, we...
Yes, sir. It wasn't, it's not separate funding like that.
The reason I'm trying to, what I'm trying to understand is, if we haven't invoiced the state for the, or have we invoiced the state for the money?
No, sir, they started a new project, a new portal for that, so Kale and I had to be certified on it. We just finished that last week to do the submittal on it.
Well, so I come back to what I was trying to figure out is why is, is there any merit to looking at moving forward with Phase Two and invoicing Phase Two for these state appropriations, rather than trying to go back and correct all the footwork that's already been done and is paid for ARPA, do the next phase with these funds? Or is that even an option?
No, sir, because we've already expended it on our end, unless we don't reimburse ourselves. So Phase Two, what we're calling Phase Two?
We've, we've spent ARPA funds that we should not have spent ARPA funds on this project.
Phase Two on our end was just broken up for scheduling for Little League season.
Okay, never mind. Okay, sorry.
No, you're fine.
I thought I had an idea that would save some, some challenges for the finance department as well as move forward with the Phase Two, but never mind.
Brooklyn, I'm brainstorming though, there might be some ways that we can, we can fix it. I've got full confidence.
Just make sure everything we do is do it.
Yeah.
Legal and transparent.
Yes, that's the most priority. That's it for the pending business report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Break. We're gonna take a five minute...
Go back in the Bay County Board of County Commissioners meeting and we have a public hearing at 6:00 PM, so we're going to go right into our public meeting now. The first item on the agenda has been removed until further date, so we'll go into our first hearing items, which is ordinance 2025-36, Mr. Don.
All right, good evening again. So again, all of these are first hearing, so this is the first time you're seeing them and you will hear them again your first December meeting. So the first item you have is for ordinance number 2025-36. It's a rezoning request from agriculture 7.5 to agriculture 5. This parcel is located off of Otis Harbor Road on the 23C end of Otis Harbor. It is 5.01 acres, current land use of Ag B, a current zoning, current land use of Ag B, a current zoning of Ag 7.5. So this parcel was created in 2003. It was separated from the parcel beside it. It is currently vacant but would be considered non-conforming because of the Ag 7.5 zoning and only the five acres being, the parcel only being five acres. It's, would be the only piece that had been subdivided from that piece without a proper process, so we're not triggering any subdivision here because it would be just creating that second parcel. The, it has been vacant since it was created. That is why we're just now here instead of previously. You know, ideally when it was created back then, when they tried to pull a building permit, they would have had this conversation back then, but it has remained vacant for quite some time. So the property owners intend to build a site built home. When they came to pull building permits at this time, that's when we made them aware that the lot was non-conforming. So we do have those building plans for a site built home. You'll see this area is both sides and to the south is all Ag 7.5 and Ag Zone B. You'll see across the street, there is some very low-density residential and some industrial, actually, believe it or not, that corner there is industrial. You'll see here, this is kind of their proposed site plan where that site built home intends to go. So the request from Ag 7.5 to Ag 5 would result in a conforming lot that they could build upon, and it would have the same uses and lot requirements with a minimal change in density. So with that, staff does recommend approval and LPA recommended approval as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments from anyone on the board? Hearing none. Any questions or comments on this item from anyone in the public? Let's move to our next item on the agenda.
Okay. The next two items are companion items, so if it's okay with you, I'll present them together.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this here is for ordinance number 2025-37, a small-scale land use amendment with a request of agriculture B to very-low-density residential, and the companion rezoning application, ordinance number 2025-38, with a request of agriculture 7.5 to residential conventional mobile home 1. So this map probably looks very familiar because this is around the corner from the parcel that we were just looking at. So this parcel is actually located off of Will Banks Lane, which is a private road that comes off of Otis Harbor. So you have, this is 23C here, turn onto Otis Harbor, and then Will Banks Lane is the first road that, that would come off to your left if you were coming from that direction. So the parcel right now is 7.51 acres, so it would be considered in compliance with current standards for one-site-built or mobile home. However, the applicant does intend to subdivide the property in the future between themselves and their children. So they have two children and they do wish to give both children a, a portion of this property that is around three acres. So their intent was to give both, both children three acres and then keep the additional acreage for themselves. With the way our family lot provision is written, that would not allow for this. They would only be able to give one family lot at, at this time, and they would have to build their home first, apply for homestead before they could give that family lot. Their building timeframe with their children, one of the children is going to be building right along the same time as them, so there would not be room for the family lot provision in that case. So we've talked with them, there, there's going to be some sort of additional process that would be necessary to subdivide it in that manner, since they would not qualify for a family lot. So those conversations have, have, have been had. So if you look at the aerial here, on three sides, it is Ag 7.5 and agriculture B. On the other side of Will Banks Lane, it is RCMH 1 and very-low-density residential. So when, when looking at the area, while it does have that Ag 7.5 on three sides directly across the private lane with the RCMH 1, staff felt that it did kind of fit the trend for that, for that area. Again, an additional process would be required to, to subdivide it. The easement that is recorded, it is a recorded easement. It, it's listed as a non-exclusive easement, so you'll see there, that's kind of a, kind of the definition of a non-exclusive easement there. And I have the easement if you guys wish to see it. Staff recommended approval and LPA recommended approval as well. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Ladonna, we, we know the requirements for subdivisions when it's divided a third time. When does that division start counting?
So that is, we go back to that 1991 date when we initiated, when we put forth that original comp plan. So when we get, when we get applications, we check the history of the parcel at least to that date, and that kind of gives us our parent, our parent track. And so any subdivision of the property from 91 to current, we would, we would count to tell us the number of subdivisions.
So do, so do we know when this parcel was created?
We do, and there are, there are instances where it can be, the division of the property does not count towards that subdivision. So that would be in the instance that it was a family lot process, or it was subdivided by court, you know, through a probate process or something like that, or if it was inherited property through, through a will or a life estate, something like that. So I apologize, I do not have the deed with me, but this lot itself was originally created prior to, prior to that 1991.
Okay, well, that's the, to me, that's the critical thing here. If it was there in advance, because first of all, I'm in favor of it, I'm not, I'm not asking my questions because I have concerns or opposition to it, I think what's been requested is very reasonable. I'm just more curious as to how we make that determination of when it's a subdivision, because you could take a larger piece of property, divide it into 10 different tracks like this, and then return several years later and start dividing each one of these again. So when does the subdivision quote kick in? And that's why I'm trying to understand if it's, if it's since 1991.
So since 1991, anytime one parcel becomes three or more is when that is, is triggered, you'll say. So once that third parcel happens, a subdivision, a subdivision process is required. In the future, if they wanted to subdivide one of those lots, they would have to go through an additional subdivision process.
But in this case, this, this whole development, this area and this parcel is not part of a subdivision anyway. So none of this kicks into effect, so it's really looking at, this was a lot predated 1991, so as such, and it's only being divided into two.
Well, it would be three.
It's crooked into three total lots.
Yes, sir.
But it's only having two, so is this, with it creating three lots out of this one, is that kicking, kicking it into a subdivision?
It would, they're going to have to go through a subdivision process.
Okay. And an exemption request? I'm confident they're going to ask for an.
Probably not, probably not, it, no, it couldn't, it, the, for the exemption request, the lots being created have to be five acres or more, so in this case, there's not enough acreage for an exemption request.
But as a subdivision, not an exemption from the creating the lots, is an exemption from some of the requirements, i.e. paved streets and so forth?
Right.
Because they don't intend to pave streets coming into this.
No, and they can only ask for that if the tracks they're creating are larger than five acres.
So, so to be clear, whenever this comes back to divide it to create the three parcels, it has to come back to us as a subdivision?
It, at, with their proposed plan right now, yes. Now, when they get into it, if they decide, we're only going to give one child a portion of the property, then they would not have to. There are instances that it wouldn't. If they decide, we're gonna, we're gonna build, kids are gonna build later, and we'll go through the family lot, then it could look different, but yes.
My only reason I'm asking my questions for, I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of what you want to do, I'm not, I take it that folks at the backs, the property owners. So my questions are not to create any obstacles for you, just trying to make sure others.
We're, we're obstacle.
Okay.
Yeah, but as it stands right this minute, with the, with the proposed plan to create those three lots, it would be necessary for them to go through the subdivision process.
Okay.
Question I have is if, talking about subdivision process, if this is a parent parcel and they wanted to give each child one acre, it wouldn't trip subdivision, if the house was homesteaded on the property already.
It would not, it would not. However, they would not be able to give two family lots without some sort of rezoning, because at seven and a half acres now, if they give one family lot, that puts them down to six and a half, and then they're not.
They could go to a five, five-acre rezoning ag, which is all this property is anyway. I don't, there's not a piece of property here that I see that's 7.5 acres.
Right, right.
Every one I'm, I'm looking at is under 7.5 acres. So they could have came in with a, grew from 7.5 to five acres, and then they could have done two lots, one-acre lots, under the homestead, homestead child exemption, and then they would have to do anything.
Yes, but they would have to, they would have to finish building and apply for homestead before they could give a family lot.
I understand that.
So.
But that would stay them, the aggravation of going through.
Yes, it would, it would.
Through subdivision, subdivision.
How long does it have to be homesteaded?
There's not a minimum requirement for how long it has to be.
It has to be.
In order to give the family lot. Now, if you receive a family lot, you build from the time of CO, you have to have homestead and keep it for three years.
That's right.
But in order to give the family lot, there's not a minimum on how long you have to have it.
Once you receive it, it's, it's legal.
Right, right.
And they've been made aware of this.
And just after talking through options and, and it being their intention to, to build close to the same time and wanting to give the children more than one acre, this was, yes, sir.
I'm just trying to find an easier way that they don't have to go into the subdivision plan, because that's, that's a whole different ballgame.
Yes, yes.
Have they been made aware of the process of the subdivision?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I mean, I have no problem with what's being done, I'm just looking for a better way to do it.
Right.
And I would think that rezoning to five-acre track and then giving two one-acre tracks is a lot cheaper than what they're talking about doing.
The challenge becomes if they only have one acre and they're trying to go put a mortgage on it and so forth, and it's not sufficient, that creates some challenges down the road for that side too, but it, it may make it easier from the subdivision side, but it may make it more of a challenge down the road for them for financing it and, and all those kinds of things.
Once you give a family lot provision, all you do is give them an acre, that's the same thing, it's a legal law.
And we're, and we're not seeing any problems from, we're not seeing any problems on the family lot side, where the family lot was given, but we have had instances where the parent parcel has issues with financing.
Wouldn't be an issue here if they was in five acres.
If you went to Ag 5, you can give them almost two and a half acres the first time and then be able to split it again.
But then when they gave that second time, if they had to refinance later, that would.
As long as they are fully aware of it, make that decision, that's all we're doing, is making sure that they understand what they're moving forward, if this is their preferred route, that's, I have no objections to it.
I just don't want those surprises to them after the fact that they gotta come back for subdivision rule.
Right, right.
Because there won't be any exemptions because they don't meet the five-acre.
Right, that five-acre threshold.
If you ain't in the five-acre threshold, we can't give you an exemption. I mean, that's their choice.
And that's one thing too, that we've been looking at a lot through this, you know, looking at the comp plan amendment and the subdivision regulations, and we do have a lot of instances where you have a smaller parcel that does not meet the exemption parameters, but something like this where you're creating only three lots, that doesn't necessarily outweigh, you know, the benefits don't always outweigh the cost in that situation to go through the full-blown subdivision process. So we've kind of been looking to see how other jurisdictions are handling that type of thing to see, get some direction for the future.
Any other questions or comments from anyone on the board? Any questions, comments from anyone in the public? Yes, sir. If you would come to the, you have to come up to, state your name for the record, please.
David Gray, I live off of Will Banks Lane next to the property. My question was, it, it was going to be divided into one-acre lots. That's what I thought, you know, that's what it said in the form that I got, I called it, and also called up here and checked with her.
So that's for, it's a one-acre zoning district.
Zoning.
That doesn't mean that it's creating one-acre lots, that's just the zoning.
The zoning, okay, all right. So the other thing is just the traffic on that road is already, you know, it's just, like you said, it's a private, or it's a, it's a driveway, basically.
Yeah, I know, I've been there many times.
And, well, yeah, so, I mean, and the concern is adding, you know, if they add four more residents down that driveway, I mean, it's not just the people, then you got UPS, you got FedEx, you got Amazon, pizza delivery, I mean, it's just a constant, you know, array of people. I, I just, that was my main concern, is just the amount of traffic that that would, it would add to that area.
Yeah, I agree. On one-acre lots, seven, five, we said it's five-acre track?
So it's 7.5 acres.
So that would be seven houses, but that's not what they're asking for?
It's three.
Right, that, yes, their, their proposal is for three, three lots total.
What would be if they wanted to put seven, because the zoning allows for seven? We couldn't stop.
I mean, if, if they met all, if they met all the parameters for the subdivision.
They're going to have to meet those anyway.
Paved the road.
Yeah, and that, that was my main concern, I mean, and I know they, you know, they probably want to stay there, build houses, but life changes, you know, and it very well could, one person leaves and then, hey, we're selling it, and somebody buys it, now they have 10 lots.
We have to look at the future.
And I got a lot of traffic.
We agree.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That was going to be my next question. This is a private road, if it trips into the subdivision rule, but they're going to have to pave that road out to Otis Harbor?
Without having a, without having a full application, that's potentially yes, or at least improve it to a, improve it to a standard that it would meet requirements.
And all this has been explained to them just for three houses?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure that they're aware of the costs of what we're talking about.
So we can, we can revisit and have a more detailed conversation and really break out those fees, and the path moving forward, taking this route, and the path moving forward if they were to amend an application to, to an Ag 5 zoning. We could look at those differences and, you know, see if they're willing to make some concessions with the lot sizes given to the children or something like that, or building timeframes for them.
My concern is, we're going to go through this process and then it's going to come right back to us, because when the total cost comes out, what it's going to cost to bring this lot up to a subdivision, which is what it's going to require, because we can't exempt it.
Right.
It's going to put the cost of bringing it to a subdivision more than all the three houses are going to cost. That is my concern as a commissioner and as a builder, that's what I do for a living. So I'm not sure that they're aware of that cost.
My question also raises another question, they have an easement. That doesn't mean they only can just do whatever they want, they have the right to traverse across it, to go in and out. That doesn't mean that they can go build whatever improvement they want on to that easement. So there's another question there on exactly what they can do.
And that.
And I just, my concern again at the end of the day, and that's why I started the questions about this whole process and understanding the subdivision, what it requires for subdivision and when it's to determine subdivision, because I do believe that that's, that approach is going to be problematic to it, but if they just have to understand what the, what the request is and, before they proceed down there, otherwise, otherwise what's going to happen, and this is why we're having these conversations, and, and we need to know when this was, discussion was had, so that there's no misunderstanding, because what's going to come back is going to come be presented to the board of what a hardship that we are causing or creating for them, when we're trying to explain upfront the path they're going. It may, and they, they make and take an alternate path, it may not be their most ideal path, but it accomplishes what they wanting, because the path they're going down and is, is the way it seems, is insisting on going down this path, it is going to be problematic for them, and they're going to be seeking relief from the board, and we're trying to advise before you get to that point is you're unlikely to get that relief, and that's why we just want to make sure that you understand it.
And I'm not sure the legalities of, I wish Rich, I was told immediately, it would really have to be here, but this is an item where I'm not sure that you can build a subdivision over an easement.
And that, and actually, that's why I put the, the easement definition here and brought the easement, hoping, you know, Rich could give us a little direct, a little bit of direction there, because it is, the verbiage is a little different than the standard easements that, that we see on a regular basis.
Let me tell you where I'm at right now. You're looking for us, you're looking for us to approve one-acre tracks on a seven-and-a-half acre track on a private road. I can't support that, because even though their intentions are to build three houses and split and do all they, they want to do legally, they could walk out of this building, go to the next set buyer, sell that property once we approve it.
That is true.
And they could put seven houses on there, there's nothing this board, no control this board would have over those seven houses being built, other than the subdivision rule, which is the same thing we're trying to prevent here. This is not an ideal place to build a subdivision.
Right, we, we.
And I'm not saying that's what they want to do.
This avenue would do lose the protection of that family lot provision.
I'm not saying that's what they want to do, by no means, but I cannot support one-acre lots on a private road with an easement to a subdivision, which is what you're asking us to, me to do, and I cannot support that, because I don't think it is right. I think there's other options. I think the five-acre, it might not be perfect.
Right.
For what they want to do, but we have to do things by the letter of the law.
There's a, another option would be too, even a, a two-and-a-half acre, an RCMH 2.5.
That's different.
So my suggestion is, this is just the hearing tonight.
Absolutely, we can take this direction.
I think we've expressed those concerns, I would strongly encourage you to go back and have that conversation, and when it comes back to the board for the second hearing, if it's next meeting or the following, have those, and let's be sure that those have been articulated to the person to, before it comes back to us for a vote.
We will, we can, we'll, we'll make sure we lay out all those options and lay out the entire subdivision process and what that looks like as well, just to make sure that there's, there is no misunderstanding, absolutely, we can do that.
You want to speak? Mrs. Don, I think, I think she wants to speak.
Well, I was wondering.
Could you come up?
My name is Susan Davis. My husband and I bought the property, that's my daughter Emma, she's wanting to live on the property with us, and my son Ben, he's only 17 right now, so he wouldn't be building with us till later. I don't like to speak in front of people, so I was wondering if it would be okay if my husband, since I have no clue what y'all are talking about, can he go on speaker? He works in Miami, so he's in Miami.
Tonight is the, the first hearing for this, and I think that he needs to listen to what the commissioners said, he can listen to on a recording.
He's listened, he's been listening.
If he's listening, then there's nothing really that we're going to make any decision here tonight, he's heard everything, our comments, but from what has been presented by Ms. Ladonna, I don't think it's going to fly with the board tonight, so I would think that you would want to go back and have the conversation, you and your husband with Ms. Ladonna, and just get all this stuff straightened out and then bring what you really want to the board. I'm thinking if you, when you have the conversation with Ms. Ladonna, this is not the way you want to go. And I could tell you, as a commissioner, if it comes to me, what's presented right now, I'm just being honest with you, I'm going to say, I'm going to vote no.
So before, before we get to that second reading, let's sit down and have a, have a meeting and.
It would be better. I just want to give you the opportunity.
To make sure that, that this is how you guys want to proceed, and let's make sure.
We're trying to help you.
But just to be clear, we're not trying to build one-acre lots.
We know that.
Let's build the property with my son and daughter.
And we want to get you there, we want to get you there, we're not opposed to it, we just want to make.
That's really all we're trying to do.
And we want, we want to help you, get you there in a manner, and that's why we're asking.
Right.
Tonight is just a public hearing.
Yeah.
There is, there's no votes or nothing tonight, it's a requirement, it's the next meeting when we have the second hearing that we actually take a vote on, and all we're doing is wanting to make sure you clearly understand all your options before you come back here, that's all we're trying to do. Just make sure you clearly understand it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public have anything to say on this item? Okay, we'll move on to the next one.
All right. Okay. So, before we start, I want to give you guys this. So, this is an application for special exception. Um, this is a parcel you guys should be pretty familiar with. Um, earlier this year, um, this parcel went through a land use and zoning change. Um, this parcel is located off of Nurse's Boulevard. Um, it is seven point three three acres, um, with a commercial zoning, or a commercial land use and a commercial highway zoning. It's directly across the street, um, from, from the RV park. So, with that, uh, land use and zoning request from earlier this year, our initial request, um, was for an industrial, um, land use and zoning. After having conversation with you all and with council, um, it was suggested that they go to commercial highway instead, with a special exception to allow for, um, RV storage. So, that is why we're here now, um, is with that RV storage. What you have there is the, the proposed site at this time. Um, this, this proposal has not went through, um, any sort of development process yet. This is, this is the, a preliminary, um, preliminary site plan. So, of course, there would still be a process for it, and we would have to meet all of the, the requirements for that development application. Um, speaking with the property owner before the meeting, um, they're close to ending the, um, the DEP permitting process, um, to get ready to go more to that county, county level process. So, you'll see here, um, on the map, it has not been updated yet in the, in the system, but, uh, you can see it, it meets the culture of the area. Um, it's commercial on two sides. Um, it's PUD and Recreation on the other side. Um, to the north is the only, the only property that is a residential property. So, of course, going through that development application, any, any required buffers on that residential side, we would, we would work through during that development application. Um, so, a-again, you saw this as a land use and zoning earlier this year, um, and this was, we're here per your direction. Um, if you have any questions, uh, with the site plan or the property, let me know. Um, staff recommends approval, and LPA recommended approval as well.
Questions or comments?
I do just a quick questions of clarity. I see it's showing a security fence. Do we know what kind of security fence they're talking about? Is it an opaque fence, or is it, is it a solid panel fence, or is it a chain link fence, or what are we...
Is that something you decided yet? So, again, we haven't reviewed this.
I, I understand. I'm just, I remember comments that was made at the previous meeting. I'm just wanting to make sure we've thought.
Travis Horn, I'm the Horn property owner. Um, I think we spoke about this. It's either gonna be a six foot chain link fence with a mesh, the barrier, or vegetated buffer around the six foot. It's gonna be a six foot chain link fence for sure. Uh, we were kinda, I think we were kinda seeking the direct, I didn't know if it was ever, if we were gonna get direction per, like, what we had to do, but I don't know if there was, like, options. But I think we're, it seems like we're gonna go with that mesh, basically, six foot chain link fence with mesh around it, is what we're gonna do.
Okay. I ju, I just remember have, I remember there was a part of this conversation, when I come up the first time, about the fencing and, and having some type of visual break, a barrier for the adjacent neighborhood, because the, the one on the north of it is, it's where it shows existing structure that somebody's home, residence, and we just...
We had a, uh, remember, we had an email from my neighbor, Rich, basically saying that he was okay with it, as long as we have some type of buffer per the, whatever the county requires.
And that's, that's why I'm asking. That's why I was wanting to make sure what it was on there, 'cause it just said security fence. It didn't say what.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you decide the plans are in review with DEP?
They, they have not, we have not, they have not been submitted for formal review yet, until this, until the special exception is approved, we would not, we would not take that application, so...
Clarification, you said to DEP, or you submit?
Now, they did, they have submitted a permit to DEP, um, with their plan to, uh, that's one of the requirements for the development plan. They have to have that DE, that DEP permit, or a, a letter from them, you know, stating a permit's not required. That's one of the requirements to submit the application.
So, so that if DEP comes back, and they, they need drainage or something, that would...
Then it would have to be, the plans would be altered at that point.
Okay. Well, that's, that's after this study.
It is, it is.
Okay.
Has the fire marshal reviewed the density or spacing plan?
He has, he has not, um, he has not for this. So, um, he has given some direction as to, um, spacing requirements and things like that. Um, but this, this specific plan, he has not reviewed yet.
Would that be done before it come back to us?
So, it actually, it would not come back to you guys. That would be done through, um, through a development application, which, with the, and that process involves the...
It has to a fire review before you can get a permit.
Yeah, it devolve, it involves the building department, the fire, um, the, our civil engineers. Um, there's a group that reviews that.
There's a process for that.
Yes, there is a process for that.
Okay.
And I, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm glad to see this continuing to come. I think it's a great supplemental side of the business for the RV park there. I think it helps provide that. It keeps, uh, business here. It adds more opportunities here for payment and things, so I've...
Right.
I'm encouraged with it, and I think it's a good, a good approach here at this location, once it's done correctly with all the requirements.
Right. And that, and like you discussed with the fence, um, so it would have to be, um, it's six foot fence, that vegetative buffer or wall. There's a, a type of wall that could be, but it does lay, that's laid out in that development application, what those, what those requirements are against residential property, so...
Yep. I looked at the plan. It looks like he's tried to do everything that is requested, so...
Yes, sir. That's, that's, that's the impression we've had as well.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone in the public have any comments? Okay, just the last one.
Actually, we have two more. So, this, um...
Oh, yeah, all six.
So, this is, um, a variance, a variance request, um, re, asking for relief of a buffering requirement. So, um, generally, a variance, um, would be approved by LPA, but with this being, um, a commercial development, uh, those variances will come to you guys. So, this property is located on the northeast corner of State Road 121 and County Road 228. It's, um, directly across the street from the storage unit that was put on the opposite corner, uh, a year or so ago, right there, um, at the red light. Um, the parcel is two point zero seven acres. The current land use and zoning are both industrial, um, and it has been that way for some time. So, within that industrial zoning, there are some pretty extensive buffering requirements. Um, it is a hundred and fifty foot buffering requirement for buildings. Um, within the first seventy-five feet of that buffer, there are certain things that are allowed. Within that second seventy-five feet, there are some other things that are allowed, like parking and, and things like that. Um, and that is for any, um, any side of the parcel that is adjacent to anything other than agriculture, commercial, or industrial. So, um, any sort of residential zoning, that, that bufferage requirement comes into place. So, with the size of this parcel, with the buffer requirements, it leaves very little usable space, um, on this parcel. So, um, land use and zoning, you'll see here, it is, this is one of those areas in the county where we have a land use and a zoning that is not compatible, and that's to the north of this parcel. So, to the north of this parcel, it has a commercial land use, but it has an RCMH one zoning. So, those are not, those are not compatible. Um, at some point, the land use was changed and the zoning was not. Um, this site, if you're familiar with it, it is not used for residential purposes. Um, it is a, a commercial, a commercial business there. Um, then you'll see on the other two sides, um, it's RC one behind this parcel, and that is a large tract of land owned by Ray and Ear. And then to the south, there is a parcel that is RCMH one, very low density residential, and there is a structure, there is a home on that parcel. So, if you look here, this is the, this is the proposed, the proposed plan for this parcel. So, if you were to take on three sides, because, um, it is technically zoned residential on three sides, no matter how it's being used right now, if you were to take and come in a hundred and fifty feet on all three of those sides, except for the road frontage, you're left with a thirty foot wide strip, uh, essentially in the middle. Um, for some, and, some, and, yes, clear.
On your graphic, which side is northeast or whatever?
Yes, so this, um, this would be your north side here. So, this would be the commercial...
So, so, so 121 is running across the top?
121 is here.
Thank you.
Yes. So, this would be 121. This would be the side that, um, is land use, commercial, um, zoning, RCMH one. This here, the three hundred and thirty-one, um, that is the wooded area behind it that is owned by Ray and Ear, that does have an RC one zoning. And then along this side here, um, is the, the residential dwelling that is to the south of the property. So, the proposed building site back, setbacks are what you see up here. So, along the north side, it would be fifty point seven here, and fifty-three point four here. Along the south side, which is the residential, that's currently used residentially, you see a hundred and ten feet and a hundred and seven feet. So, that would be where the retention pond would be. Um, along the backside here, you would see, uh, thirty point four and twenty-nine point eight. And then along 121 would be the seventy point five and seventy-seven point three. So, the parcel does kinda set an angle, and that's why, that's why you see two different numbers on each side. Um, so there you'll see that, that description of that one hundred and fifty foot buffer, and where it, where it talks about the seventy-five foot yard, the seventy-five foot buffer, um, closest to the property line, and it's allowed, what it's allowed to use, and then that remaining buffer could be used for some ac, some activities, um, like parking and fences and walls. So, talking through with the, with the property owner, um, it is their intent to design a climate controlled storage unit facility like what's, similar to what's across the street. Um, but these would be larger bays, um, and they would intend, it, the intention would be to, um, you know, if you have local contractors that need storage, um, you have, um, someone who needs a, a large boat storage, for example, um, that wanted that climate controlled. So, we discussed the differences in commercial, you know, what if you did a rezoning to, to go back to commercial instead of industrial. Um, we have found with the other storage facilities, there are a few odd things that are not allowed to be stored within commercial zonings. Um, paint, for example, is one of them. Technically, paint cannot be stored inside of a commercial zoning. Um, like we've just seen with the previous application, if someone wanted to rent a climate controlled space to store their boat, that would not be allowed within commercial. So, with these being larger bays...
Because of the fuel. It's not because of the boat, it's because of the fuel.
Right, right, right. Um, so, when we were to, to go through the development process, um, that would be discussed with, um, with our fire chief to meet those requirements, um, with firewalls, sprinkler systems, those type of things to provide that additional layer of protection. So, that's why you see a request for variance instead of a, a rezoning request. Um, if this project, um, were to not come to fruition, um, this variance is project specific, so it would not, um, you know, it would not go with the, the life of the property. So, if this site was not constructed, the variance would, would be no longer. Um, so, talking to the property owners, um, honestly, for them in the future, if this does not happen, that industrial zoning, they paid, they paid an industrial rate for the property and resale value, um, you know, they would want that industrial rate. Or if, uh, this building in the future is tore down, there may be an, a, a project that may fit that, that limited space for industrial use. Um, so, the, the... Yes, yes. So, um, the applicant is here, if you have more specific questions, um, for him, but that is, that is where we are. Um, you see, it's a seventy by seventy, a hundred and seventy by a hundred and seventy building. Um, I think it, three bays? Is that what we just, sorry, three bays?
Sir, can you come to the...
Yes. Okay, tie on it. Uh, so, it's, it's a one seventy by one seventy. Uh, across, it would be a one seventy by one thirty would be just similar to exactly what we have across the street, which would be full climate control, self-storage. The contractor base, uh, across the front would be one seventy by forty. Uh, so, that's, it, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be like a Walmart DC or any, but not, not, it's not big.
So, you're looking at two different buildings, or one?
It's all, it would be all building.
All one building.
And we would follow the same, we're very familiar with the fire code from across the street. Uh, it would be same process we had to go through to build across the street. It's another climate controlled building, just with taller
Yeah.
bays across the front.
Did they require sprinkler suppression systems in the old, in the new buildings?
It's, it's either or. So, it's, it's of every twenty-five hundred square feet, uh, three hour firewall, or sprinklers, which, whichever.
Okay.
Whichever one.
So, with these being larger, um, you're looking probably at sprinklers, sprinklers and...
That's what I was asking, 'cause the, the only concern I, I have with the project is, it's not the residential side or the commercial side, 'cause you're, but commercial to commercial, um, or industrial to industrial on the one side. The only issue I have is thirty foot in the back of, there's force. That's force. We catch fire, we're gonna burn a lot of trees. So, what, if it's a suppression system, it makes me feel better than having just a firewall between the two buildings. So, I'm not sure how that's gonna play out, because if we have a fire suppression system, I'm not as worried much about the fire getting into the trees as I am without it. Can you understand what I'm, what I'm coming from?
I do, and we, we, and we don't get to pick and choose.
I know you don't.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's, there would be a, there would be...
But we get to pick and choose how far you are from the trees.
I understand, yes.
And, and that's what my concern is. Not just, I think the layout's great, everything you're doing is, I think it's a great idea, what you're trying to do. My issue is protecting the rest of the people behind you. There ain't no people there, but there's a lot of trees. And if them trees catches on fire, you're talking about, you're not far from the, the sheriff's office and City McClinney. So, we have to be, uh, concerned about that.
Yes, sir.
So, I, it's hard for me to make that, I, to make that decision without knowing the suppliers, some fire suppression system, what, what we're gonna do.
And you would have to have an internal layout for, for us to be able to have that direction. Um, it depends on how, exactly how that's laid out inside, in the square footage of each bay.
I understand, but I, to me, to make a good decision, it's gonna, it's gonna require me to know if it's gonna be fire suppression or walls, 'cause the walls is not gonna be required on that back wall.
Yeah.
You understand what I'm saying? It's just gonna be required between the building.
Well, it's every twenty, well, there's a lot of firewalls. So, it's, there's mul, there's walls within walls.
Yeah.
But he's saying along this, the... But he's saying along this, the exterior.
They're not going to require an exterior firewall.
So to, to, again, we're just discussing this.
Right.
So if we, if we proposed agreed, if that, because I can make that. That can be a, because there has to be so many walls. Making that a wall is very, very doable.
You're talking about making that a firewall?
Yeah, I mean, we could start the fire. You're going to, I'm going to have to have so many walls? That's not, that's not hard. I could start there.
He can make that one a firewall on the back side.
Well, that was going to be, the only way I could have.
I understand.
Is the, the trees are protected.
And we tried to keep everything from, so there, there will be no, if you're familiar with the property, all the north side.
Yeah, I know all of it.
So we got our AC units back there. So that would be, I guess you're, if our AC ever went out, there would be an AC tech back there. We wouldn't have customers going by. And, and trust me, we, I think we all dealt with the firewall. We, we did. And we'll, we'll, if that's what it takes, that's.
That's what it's going to take for me. I'm just one board member, but I think that if you're asking us to reduce a buffer to protect, for you, we got to protect the trees for Ray and Ear. And then, of course, we got to protect other people's property. And the fire marshal, I know, when he, he's got the, he needs, he wants 100-foot. When, if Trevor looks at it, he's going to want 100-foot from the building to the trees.
Yes, sir.
That's a, that's even a residential requirement in some of our places that we have. When you're, when you're against a forest.
Yes, sir.
And that was, that was Chief Nelson's comment too, was that at, at this point, he, he did not have any comments as far as this, but that we would deal with any issues during the planning and site development. So we know that those, we know that there are those comments, but they may be contingent on what that looks like.
Well, that would be the only way I can move forward to approve the setbacks. I'm fine with all of them, but the back, just for the simple fact of fire protection.
Can we condition the variance?
And that's, that's what I was about to say. It is my understanding that we can. And that the variance is very specific as to what the requirements are. So like, for example, the setback relief, it's down to the foot.
So, so the short answer is, my question is, is can we modify the variance and say, you're requesting a variance from the setback of 100 feet, but you're providing a firewall?
That is my understanding. And I can make sure, I can touch base with Rich just to make sure, but I think so.
I think what you heard, you're asking for a variance rather than a variance to simply go down to here. It's a variance to reduce it by you, because of you installing a firewall or fire suppression. I think with, if that's the modification to the variance, then it comes back to us, I think you'll be good with it. I like your layout. You got the, you got the pond on the south side, which is adjacent to the residential. Your north side is adjacent to, to already commercial-type activities. There's nothing behind you right now, except for trees. So if anybody comes there, they come in after you, so I'm good with that. So that's my suggestion is to, to modify the variance to include that condition of either fire suppression or firewall there.
If suppression is needed, would that water come from a well? Or would that come from, say, in the county water?
There's separate ways they can do it.
Yeah, there, there's options there.
There's tanks you can do it with. That would all be up to the designer. All I'm doing is requiring that we have some kind of suppression system or firewall. I miss all.
I mean, I like the layout, most of it.
It was also my suggestion to, when just discussing with, with LPA, that along the residential use side to, to meet one of the parameters for the commercial to residential zoning. So some sort of site restructuring.
Yes, I think I want, that was going to be my comment.
Vegetation or, or something along that south end.
We would keep the, if we needed to add, we could add. We would keep the, if you go to the problem, there's a.
There's a buffer already, there's a natural buffer there.
There is, there's a natural buffer and that natural buffer may meet that requirement, but.
We had to do the same thing.
Right, on that, that backside, yeah. So while the industrial zoning doesn't lay that out, because of the buffers being the way they are, it would just be my suggestion that you also require that.
Well, it's already a natural buffer. They leave the buffer that's there, they build a retention pond, I don't see an issue. The biggest issue with the pond there, it helps me a lot with the buffer.
Right, right.
But, and we're not talking about a, a business here that's going to be doing a lot of loud noises, beating and framing, it's a storage facility.
Well, and, and it's a solid wall, there's not even a vehicle going on that side.
Right, there's nothing.
No vehicle can even get to that side towards the residence. They're all facing 121.
So that I can live with the, the natural buffer that's there. And then, but like I said, the only thing I require is protection for the trees, so we could burn the plenty of that.
So I will, like, it's my understanding that that is a condition that can be added. But I will touch base with Rich just to make sure that that is something that would be allowed. Since that would be a, a separate, you know, we could cover both things in one variance for that development application.
Sounds good. Thanks, sir.
One more. Now we got one more.
Now you have one more. Okay. So this is an application for subdivision development. This property is owned by Arrowood Florida LLC. So you saw a similar application earlier this year. It was an exemption to preliminary requirements earlier this year. And that application was withdrawn. It was direction from the board to maybe, maybe relook at this application. So this is 300 acres, just over 300 acres, north of I-10 and Sanderson, along County Road 229, Wire Mill Road and Arnold Roden Road. So the little piece that is cut out there, that is where the Sanderson Fire Station is. Currently has a land use of Ag B and a zoning of Ag 75. The applicant proposes to record platted subdivision lots, but is not proposing to development, to develop them. The lots, once recorded, would be available for individual purchase to buyers who would then develop, which isn't necessarily uncommon with larger, larger tracts of land. So there is several different land use and zoning categories in this area. So I kind of zoomed out and I left that, that table at the bottom so that you could kind of decipher that. There are just, there's a little bit of everything in this downtown area. So I thought that would be the best way to get a clear picture of that. So you do, as well on the bottom, see the FEMA flood map to see where that flood zone falls onto this parcel. As we had discussed before, there is a significant portion of this property that is actually wetland area, about 48%. So looking at the site plan here, it, it does look a little overwhelming simply because those wetland lines are there. You know, we, we want to see those wetland boundaries. So even if it, even if it makes it look a little messy, we would rather have that information than not have it. So one of the things that was discussed at the, the last meeting was the multiple access points onto 229. And that, through that area, that was just not ideal. So with this application, that is something that was changed. So along the 229 stretch there, Lot 1 and 2, which are along this side of 229, Lot 1 and 2 still have individual access points. Lots 3 and 4 share an access point. Lots 5 and 6 share an access point. 7 and 8 share an access point, and 9 and 10. So that initially, you had 10, 10 driveways with that first application, potentially 10 driveways going on to 229. So this proposal has four access points on the west side and only two access points on the east side. So that was reduced from 10 access points down to six. The access points did not change along Wire Mill Road or Arnold Roden Road. But those, those were, were less concerning at that time. You look like you had a question.
Yeah, I, I'll just tell you upfront, I have concerns with this. And I think we have a probably a bigger overall item to think about. And this is something that, that I think the commission needs to start entertaining that concept of. We have been going down a path with our current land development regulations that says if you're connecting to a paved road, you're exempt from subdivision requirements. And we have zero restrictions on how many connections you can have onto a county road that is county-maintained. We've done this over the years, and I understand where we're at. We've done it, and if you take a look at some of our key roadways in this county, such as Otis Sharber Road, how many driveways we have, left and right side. You take a look at County Road 125 going north, multiple, multiple access points all up and down. And I look at a subdivision such as this, and I see a lot that is super skinny and really, really long. And I see driveway after driveway after driveway. And the only reason, in my opinion, that it's laid out this manner is so there's zero improvements that need to be done by the developer, who already says he's not developing it. He's going to get a plat and sell off every one of those lots individually, one at a time. And every one of those lots along a county road, whether it's paved or not, every single last lot is hitting a county road. And there's multiple driveways that every time we try to maintain that roadway, where motor grader's trying to go in and out around it, we're going to have to go in and excavate, clean around those culverts, every last one of them. Anytime we go to do an improvement on that road, never to pave it, we got to redo all of them driveways. As a county, we are creating our own issues by approving subdivisions like this. And this one is probably an extreme of the approach. Would you have, and what are these lot sizes, 10 acres?
Yes, so they are.
And I bet you don't need to answer this, but the ratio of width to depth is probably about a 10 to 1. It is 10 times deeper than the width is. It is nothing but long. And we've got to get to a point to where we're not allowing this kind of, of this approach on our county roads, because these roadways serve more than that one development. And everybody driving along it has to deal with it. And this is an extreme. And we should start limiting the number of access connection points on the county roads for subdivisions. So that there's a certain number of those, and they can create their internal network. There's no reason why this one, this development couldn't do just like some of the other large developments and create their own network internally, have private, self-maintained roadways. But they don't want to do this because it requires them to create an HOA and pay to take care of their own internal roadways. Instead, we do this kind of development, and every driveway hits our road, and the public is now having to maintain it. This is an extreme. We just approved a development recently over in Sanderson, just not too far from your, I think where you live, Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
On all of these lots connecting off of.
124.
124. We also just had a very similar request for lots over off of the road out in.
231.
231, out in the forest. So we continue to do these kind of developments, and this is an extreme. And I'm going to tell you upfront, I'm not going to be okay with this. I'm not going to vote to support it. This is clearly a, in my opinion, the best way to say it, yes, does it meet the law? It does, but it's an abuse of the intent, and it's coming to us for a reason.
Yes, sir.
And, and the other more, even when we do have multiple lots like this, under no circumstance would should be agreeing to every single lot having its own driveway, they should be shared use regardless. We should be limiting the connection points along our county roads that the public is driving, because every time you have another connection point, it's another potential location for, for an accident to occur when there's too many along there. And this one, I'm going to tell you upfront, I'm not going to be okay with, with approving the subdivision development exemption.
Yes, sir. So, so Rich did attend our LPA meeting, where this was, was heard by LPA. LPA members had echoed concerns. It, it was the instruction of, or guidance of Rich that we were to be looking, the LPA was to be looking at current requirements, current statute, and does it meet that? So LPA did, did recommend approval that it met those statutory requirements. But the same, the same concerns were, were heard.
So, so what's it here for us to review then? What, what are we reviewing and giving approval for?
So when we had that conversation, Rich said we were looking for this, does it meet the land use? Does it meet the zoning? Does it meet the width requirement? It does, it, it does meet the minimum requirement.
So unless I'm mistaken, the lots are supposed to be accessed by, by a paved road?
So not if they are 10 acres or larger. For 10 acres or larger, it is just county-maintained. It, it does not say paved. It is county-maintained for lots larger than 10 acres.
Then, then I'm going to, I'm going to ask you and staff, I, and LPA to start taking a look at, we need to start establishing and adopting land development regulations that put restrictions on the ratio of, of width to depth.
Yes.
On lots. Because this, in my opinion, again, it is a meatly, it may meet, but it is absolutely an abuse of the intent of what is, is appropriate for our county roads.
So, so right.
And, and I'm going to further ask that this needs to be, require, in order to get permits for these, these need to have joint-use driveways at everyone, at, at half the lot lines, such that there's only half the number of access connection points and they share driveways. So.
So every, so along each of the three streets?
All streets. We, we need to continue to get in my minds that public roads are public roads that's maintained by the public. They are not roads simply for a subdivision to come in and do what they want with it. There's restrictions. If you want to do this, no, there's no guarantee that thou shall issue them as the driveways that they want. They need to have reasonable access, and joint-used driveways is reasonable. Because we are maintaining what is out into the public ditch and public right-of-way. The county, the public dollars are maintaining it. We can limit how many access connections we have and how many we permit to connect to it. So it needs to be upfront known that, and if that's something that we need to put in our land development regulations, then let's get, let's put that in our land development regulations and bring it back to this board for approval.
And it is, that is one of the, that is one of the things, working through this comp plan amendment, that is on my list of, so if that's something that you want to see before we get to that process, we can, we will see what we can do to get the ball rolling on that. But it is definitely an error, an area of concern. That there is a minimum lot width requirement, but when you start talking about larger tracts, that minimum lot requirement, you know, on, let's look at Lot 6, that is 30 acres, but it's, you know, it's very odd-shaped. It doesn't meet that, it, it meets that minimum lot width, but when you put that in relation to the depth, that is.
Well, it's got a lot of road frontage, no?
That one does have, that one does have more road frontage. About half of, about half of that road frontage has wetland area in it though. So only about half of that road frontage that it has could be used for access.
Right, I mean, no, I agree with Commissioner Bennett. I mean, that's, that's a lot of driveways. And, and sharing that, he says would be my recommendation for sure.
It's a lot of wetlands to my notion.
Yeah, I agree. The ratio of wetlands to uplands is not good. And the position of those wetlands in some of these lots makes them almost unbuildable or inaccessible.
And so with talking through at the LPA meeting, it is, it is likely, we, we don't know until we get into it, but it is likely that when they start to build upon some of them, depending on where they would like to build, there, there could be, there could be issues in the future. You may be looking at some sort of alteration.
And yet, and yet the one that sent this through, the one that sent this through, got the approval, did all, everything to get the approval is long gone. And nobody to be held accountable except the property owner who bought it in good faith that's having challenges using the property that they bought.
So like you've discussed, these were previous concerns as well. Staff actually withheld a recommendation just in lieu of some guidance. Yes, we are meeting those minimum requirements, but where does that, where do those minimum requirements leave us and future property owners? That, that's the, the concern of staff. At, at some point, there may be some accountability for some of those lots, and it may be future property owners that are held for that accountability. LPA did recommend approval, but that was based on the specific conversations about it meeting statutory requirements. So I know their agent is here, so if you have specific questions that you would like to ask tonight, or if he would like to speak. But again, this was first hearing, so we, in the meantime, can have some conversation about the shared drives along the other road. That was honestly not a conversation that we had previously.
If it, there are not shared driveways, it won't move forward.
Right.
So you could talk about it or not talk about it?
Yeah.
I'm positive enough that this board is not, I don't like it to begin with.
Yeah.
And I'm going to talk to Rich about it when I, from what the concern that you've raised. But if there's any way I could turn it down, I'm going to turn it down.
Right.
Because I can see exactly what this contractor is doing. I mean, I wasn't born in a, well, I was born, I was born out of Houston. But anyway.
And, and like I said, the, the shared access, we were concentrated on that 229. So we did not discuss-
I never, I know that we talked about shared access on 229, but we said, this was exact words of this commission when it left here. There's too many driveways.
Right.
We didn't specifically say on 229. We said there should be more, less access points. Shared drive, we didn't say shared driveways. We said one or two ways in and out of this subdivision, and then build your internal roads. That's what we said.
Right, right.
But now it's brought back to us that we just fixed what's on 229 and didn't worry about the rest of the property. But let me tell you what, people live all the way around that property.
They do, they do.
And they got to come in and out. And it's not going to move, I'm not sure it's going to move forward anyway. If there's any legal way that this commissioner can turn it down, I'm going to turn it down.
Well, in a lot of-
But I will turn it down, either or.
Right.
Because we do have say-so on access to our roads.
Right.
And I'm not going to approve it with as many lots as he's showing now coming out this wide and two miles long to get onto our, that is-
I'll say too, just knowing the area that stretch along Arnold Roden Road and Wiremill Road is not just residential traffic because down there, there, there are several-
Semis. That's industrial.
Yes, it is, it is. So that is just something we're thinking about too.
Yeah. Well, you heard my opinion, so I'm not sure it's going to, we'll do what we have to do, but this is unacceptable. There might be, this is not a contractor willing to work with the commission. This is a contractor that worked, willing to work within the law. And it's not the kind of contractors we like to deal with here in Baker County. But if we have to, we will, but I will not approve it without minimal access to the county roads. This is unacceptable. Which is the same statement that I made last time.
Absolutely.
I haven't changed my statement.
Yes, sir.
So if he wants to, he wants to speak, he can speak.
Yeah, I'd like to speak. My name is Pete Skirbo. I'm one of the representatives of Arrowood Florida LLC. And I feel like some of this is, I don't think this is unacceptable. We are trying to be good stewards. We actually withdrew it listening to feedback from everyone here. Went back and double-checked and triple-checked our work to make sure that we met all of the requirements that this county has implemented through the LDRs, through the comp plan. We went ahead and invested in, as we did previously, a specific wetland delineation. You're absolutely right. Forty-eight percent of this is wet. Fifty-two percent of it is dry. We talk about, you talk about, and these roads are all paved roads. None of these are gravel roads.
Arnold Roden is not paved.
It is chip seal then. It is certainly not dirt.
It's not paved. It's, it's improved, but it's not paved.
It's not considered a paved road.
Sure. It is a hard surface road, so it's-
It's not a paved road. It is an improved county road.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean-
Yeah. It's not gravel or dirt, I was just saying. That's all.
It's not a paved road.
Understood. Hard surface road, but the-
Man, sir.
Yes.
It's not a paved road.
Okay. Understood.
We don't need your interpretation of what you think it is. It's not a paved road.
I'm not here to argue with you.
Well, that's what you, I mean, we would say it's not an improved road, and you say it's a hard surface road.
Okay. And, and some of these, I mean, we're looking at a blown-up map that's little, I mean, if you actually look at these, some of these, I think the narrowest lot is probably 200 feet or so wide. So there's, there's good width on these lots. They're not little skinny things. And with the wetlands that get spoken about, this lot, this probably doesn't lay out well to have roads running through wetlands and floodplains and stuff. That would be a negative impact for the environment, et cetera, things like that. When, when we laid this out, we were very cautious in taking into account that we went back and looked at the SEPA to make sure that there could be the hundred-foot separation from the tree line, even though it's not a great, you know, fire fuel area, but still took that into account. So some of these, the way that the actual build sites will lay out is more proportionate than what you're seeing. Some of that is just land that will forever be wild and, and wet. That doesn't, doesn't lend itself to anything, to commercial, to industrial. So we did put more thought into it. We're not trying to, you know, be sneaky or do something that is unacceptable. We're trying to create a product that fits well for that property within the parameters that the county has set forth. That is the goal here. So I hear your frustration. We heard it the first time. We went back and modified that. And we go back and talk to my folks, and we can certainly, I don't know if that's between now and the second, if that's something that would be conditional, or if we need to revamp that quickly, or how would that work if we were to come back for a, is that a condition that would be put on it for the second?
So for the, for the driveways, is that what you're-
Right.
Yeah, if it was something as minimal as the shared access, that could be a condition approval that that is shown on the plat.
Because I'm going to go back and bring that up. I'm listening. I hear that. And I think that's something we can work with. You know, if we were to go through, create a brand-new subdivision with roads off of it where they would then be dedicated to the county, I don't know. I don't even see in the LDRs where that, where those have shared driveways.
HOAs, you don't have to have, they don't have to be dedicated to-
But I'm saying if someone wanted to follow your LDRs and dedicate a road to become a county maintained road, I don't think, I didn't see anything where it said that driveways had to be shared. But again, I'm listening. I'm not trying to, you know, debate or argue. I'm listening. I'm going to go back and speak with my folks and see if we can improve on that so that it flows more cohesively with the name, essentially. So if, you know, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But we did take some time and went back and looked at things to try and make sure that this is the best use of this property, given the, some of the, I guess, impediments it has, being wetlands and things like that. And some of those on there, there are wetland lines on there. There's floodplain lines on there. There's topo lines and soil lines, all requirements the LDRs. So it gets very liney, but some of them are just distractions, so to speak.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And that's the last thing I have.
That's it.
So if no more questions, that's it.
Thank you.
Hey, y'all need a break, but we did. Continue.
Thank you.
I'm just waiting.
Let's go.
Back into our regular scheduled meeting, and we're going to go back into item number-
I'm Alfred Johnson. I live on Grand Avenue here, off of O'Leary Sharber.
Sir, you can approach.
No, sir.
We just switched him from the public hearing back to the record commission.
Are you speaking into the public hearing or what?
No, no.
What is, what is this about then?
About a call that I need on, we need on, lock it, Adam.
Why don't you give me a call?
Yes.
Whatever, we could talk separately.
Okay. Are you my, uh-
Were you, were you looking at that?
Commissioner.
Wildcat? You said Wildcat?
Where, where you look at?
You said a Wildcat, Alex? You would be Commissioner Hartley, so it's straightforward.
You have him called.
Yeah, just, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now there, you got, you got their number? If not, you can look on the website and get their number.
I'm in the book.
Why don't you get him a card?
Yeah.
She's going to get you a card.
She'll get you a card.
I got a regular home phone number, too.
Okay.
No problem.
I got both.
Okay. Now that we got woke up. Item number eight. Approval of the roadway improvements for Neamica Court. And who's going to be representing today?
Before we get started, I need to make a motion on the conflict. Yes, staying from conversation, but-
I, I also have, I need clarification from Sarah.
Okay.
Before we get to talking, in our packet was some engineering recommendations and a graphic.
Yes, sir.
Yet the graphic that I was just handed is not consistent with the graphic that was attached to the engineering recommendations.
So it was my understanding that the only change, no, sir, you're right. It's just moved.
So I don't know what the engineering recommendations, which graphic it was using, so-
The engineering recommendations were based on the graphic that was attached. And then that was a very quick, rough drawing, I think, that was provided pretty quickly after our last meeting. And the engineer provided his comments on that. This one was sent to us while we were here in a workshop this afternoon, which is why it was printed.
And-
And, and you're right. I'm sorry, at first glance, I thought the roads were the same, but they are, they are not.
Can I, I want to make sure I'm looking at the ones, because I know, I marked the one that was showing.
So the original one that Pittman provided has just got some hand-drawn things on it.
Okay.
That's what Pittman provided these comments on.
Okay.
And then again, this one that was revised with those roadways, those have been adjusted.
Okay. So, and the reason I'm making a clear distinction on it is because it is a good bit different. I'm, I'm glad to move forward and have the conversation, but I want to make, there are some clear differences that changes the recommendations that the engineer would put forth on it. And that's why I want to make sure I know what graphic the engineering recommendations were on versus what we're, what we're looking at.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Got it.
So, and just to be clear, engineering recommendations were based on having several connections on, a number of connections along Charlie Row Road. And what we have here now does not have that. And it also, the connections on Ray Phillips Road is different. And there's also considerable number of internal connecting roadways that goes, that addresses my issues from the last time, interconnectivity. So I just want to be clear for the public that there is differences with the recommendations that was had versus what we, the revised graphic now.
Right, but they're, they are in line as if they were whichever way. If we did Charlie Row, then I could see how he would want the Charlie Row improvements. A left turn lane coming off of Charlie Row, just, you know, people could stack left to go left. And they could see a left turn lane going on the Charlie Road off of, off of Louder. Our intent is, is to not build Charlie Row unless we, unless we had to because it's so pricey and expensive. We wanted to give three access powers to address some of your concerns. And so we did two access points off of Ray Phillips and one off of Louder. By, by it doing that, all his recommendations does cover everything here from a, from a right turn lane into Ray Phillips, well, just like, or a taper. There is a difference between the two.
Right.
I think I got what he's saying. And, and some extra widening out there, which would be definitely what our intent is, is to get the left turn lanes to accommodate the subdivision inward. So we, we're able, we're willing to do all that. All that he's recommended is average and normal. It's not, nothing out of the norm. We addressed the interconnection inside the subdivision. Mr. Bennett requested last time we did that. And so we took out the right only, right in, right out only that Mr. Mann and Mr. Hartley didn't like that either. So we turned that, you know, we took that out. So I think we addressed everybody's comments from last. And, and so, so I don't see actually a problem here. Everything's normal of what we have to do.
Did you see the recommendations from the engineer?
Yeah, I've got them right here. Yeah.
Okay. Can you tell me which ones that you're intending on doing, just for the board? Excluding the Charlie Road. On this list, what are you-
Right.
For the public, we need to know exactly on this list what you're intending to do.
Okay. I got you. Like bullet point one.
Right.
To require a three-lane section, Lewis Drive, you know, that's Ray Lewis, I'm assuming, to Minnesota Avenue. That's, that's, that's obvious. That's what we're going to do. So that's to accommodate the, to go into the development. Not the north Charlie Row property, or towards Charlie Row property. I could see him requiring the private owners maybe to, to accommodate that road. We would, we would accommodate enough on our property to make a widening. We wouldn't ask across the street to the north or to the east.
So hang on, let's just, we're mixing two things. On Louder Street, it's a three-lane section, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yes.
All right. So, so that's the number one bullet.
Yeah.
So no question about that one. Number two is create a northbound left turn onto Charlie Row. At this point, you're, is, is, well, if you put a three-lane section from Lewis to Minnesota, you've got a left turn at Charlie Row. And all that, and all that second bullet is saying is between South Boulevard and Charlie Row, split the left turns, opposing left, that third lane. So part's turning left on, they've got opposing lefts. In other words, if you're coming southbound, you halfway between Charlie Row and South Boulevard, it's just a striping question, all that is. Number two, the second bullet is nothing more than how you stripe it.
Right.
So it's not an issue of construction more, it's just striping it to split the difference between South Boulevard and Charlie Row such that there's a left turn lane at both directions. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Right. If we were to-
Say that one more time.
Okay. Between South Boulevard and Charlie Road, if you're going north, halfway between there, you have a left turn lane to go left onto Charlie Road. If you're coming south, when you pass Charlie Row halfway to Southern Boulevard, you now have a left turn lane to go there. So it's just a striping issue is all that one. That second bullet is nothing more than how you stripe the roadway. Create a northbound left turn on Charlie Row, split the available left turn distance between-
That would make the road wider?
Yes.
Well, the number one's already said make it a, already said make it wider.
And so you're just going to stripe it where that can turn to the left both ways?
Yes. So, so number one's already said widen it. He's already agreed to that. The second one's just how you stripe it.
Okay.
Okay? Third one's create a 350-foot northbound left turn lane onto the site entrance. That's already at the main entrance. That's already agreed to.
Yeah.
Right? The next one is extend the existing left turn into Ray Phillips by 165 foot, which can be accomplished by restriping. We've already said that coming northbound, that can be accomplished. It says create a right turn, right turn lane taper onto Ray Phillips. So as you're coming southbound, create an offset taper so that you can get off the road a little bit quicker and easier. Just, if you think of Copper Creek, when you're coming towards Copper Creek, it's offset with a taper coming off of it. So that lets the vehicle get off the road quicker. So that's, that's an easy one to accommodate. The next one is the concept indicates- The next one is the concept indicates in-left turn-out lanes at Charlie Road intersection, that one does not done because there's no driveway connections on Charlie Road. So you don't need three lanes coming out, you would accommodate the width needed in the future on your side, but you're not having connections on Charlie Road Road, so you don't need to put driveways out on, from Charlie Road onto Louder Street.
Right.
And then finally, I would require a left turn, require an in-left turn-out lanes at the side access, which is your access point. You'd have one lane in, but on your outbound, you have a left lane and a right lane for outbound, and he's agreed to that. So all the engineer's recommendations have been done.
Yep.
Everything except for the next to last bullet, is what you're saying?
Yeah, except for the next to the last one that we, that was...
Because then you've got, right for the record.
What, what I will say with this overall layout is, is a couple of things that I really like about this updated layout. In my mind, originally, I did also want to see access over on Charlie Road Road, but they've got emergency access, which I'm good with, but you really, there's minimal, minimal development along Ray Phillips, so we can't get concerned with people saying it's there. What I really appreciate is the fact that all the interconnectivity.
Yeah.
You can literally ride through the entire neighborhood with interconnectivity, there's only one road that's got a cul-de-sac, and I appreciate some folks rather live down a cul-de-sac, but every house in that neighborhood can get to every other house in that neighborhood without ever having to leave out of the neighborhood. And so my concerns were approached with having two access points off of Ray Phillips, it still gives plenty of access and spreads the movements out. So from my standpoint, from engineering, I think he's met what our engineer was recommending, and I think this layout works very well.
I agree. Great. Thank you.
And so with that, my recommendation is, Sarah, if you don't mind, articulate this back, that we've, what we intend to include as part of the development requirements for access onto our county roads, with exception to that one bullet that we've done, and we need to provide that information back to the city so they understand what the county's requesting.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I get that in the form of a motion?
I'll get that in the form of a motion. Second. Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank y'all very much. And that's how a contractor works with the board. I should have said that.
No, I, I appreciate interconnectivity, I like the way this is laid out.
Thank you.
Okay. Move to our next item on the agenda, which is our expense report over 5,000. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sarah? Hearing none. American Rescue Phase One and Two, Ms. Sarah, any updates?
No, sir, but hopefully we will have some updates on that really soon.
Praise the Lord.
Yes, sir.
Uh, fiscal year '23, '24 audit update, Commissioner Mobley.
Yes, sir. So just got an update right before the meeting. This is from Allison with, not CPH, but with James Moore. Good afternoon, Tyler. See below for an overall update on the audit. Let us know if you have any questions, or if we'd like to hop on a call this week. I will try to get on a call before the end of the week. I remember the last meeting, we kinda updated that we should be around finishing up this week, the week of the 17th.
I already checked that.
So I'll try to get a better update, you know, from them by the end of the week. As of right now, the Board of County Commissioners, the audit is approximately 85% complete, the sure link is 95% fulfillment. We are working through the wrap-up phase and starting to prep the financial statements. Currently, the only pending items relate to wrap-up of due to slash from AP and AR as discussed in our call last week. The clerk...
Counts receivable.
Counts payable, counts payable, correct. Clerk, audit completion is 95%, the request, the request list fulfillment is nearly 100%. The audit procedures are completed up to this point, pending final approval, or pending final review. There are no outstanding items. The sheriff, the audit completion is around 85 to 90%. The request list fulfillment is 95%. We are pending an adjustment from Jeffrey to wrap up the grant revenue and the to-from, to-to, due to slash from Board of County Commissioners. That's what I spoke about last, with who was going to record the revenue and who was going to record it as a receivable interfund transfer. Others, property, phrase, tax collector, supervisor of election, the audit procedures are completed up to this point, there are no outstanding items. While I was sitting here, I also got another email from Zach Califer, Califor?
You're the...
He's the one that comes and presents, right? I'll quickly chime in too, Tyler, and share that I'm also called up and reviewing the majority of the audit file to date. While that doesn't change anything in the below, it does help us shrink the backend time in terms of a, in terms of A, minimalizing any potential tail-end review time bottlenecks, and B, identifying any major issues or follow-up questions from my perspective ASAP. None at the moment. So that we're in a position to turn, to turn things around as quickly as possible once all loose ends are buttoned up. So at, at this point, I replied back, should we expect a draft letter before Thanksgiving? I haven't got that answer yet. I hope to get a better update from the call that I'm gonna try to have by Friday, so we're gonna try to get that on the books this week. So at this point, still not across the finish line, but I think we're pretty close. If I had to guess, it'll probably be the first week of December at this point, given, you know, this week and a three-day week, next week. So it'll probably be first of week, first of December.
Close.
It's, it's close, just not there.
It's made me feel good when you said what Zach said, that he is reviewing the process as it goes, that we're not completing the whole audit, and then him going back in for review and then finding issues, so that is encouraging.
That's right.
Just to educate me, would we have to have a final review and everything before this is submitted, or...
No, sir. They'll submit it to the state once it's final and then present it to you.
They present it after submitted to the state. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was shortened, as it could be.
Right.
Anything else on the audit?
That's everything I got right now.
Okay. We'll move to our next item on the agenda, which is county manager.
I don't have anything, but just thanks to everybody for going yesterday, it was a good day. I just appreciate you guys making priorities for it, for sure.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And then, did you wanna go in, I was gonna bring it up in, in my comments, but if you wanted to go into what we all did yesterday, I'll give you the honor of doing it.
I was just an attendee, if you'd like me to, to explain the process, I certainly can.
I tell you what, we'll let Commissioner Bennett do it, he was the speaker.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And he was, he was the eloquent speaker yesterday, represented Baker County Board of County Commissioners very well, and I just wanna tell him here in the, in the public meeting that we appreciate him stepping up and then doing a great job.
I, I will add just really quickly, I did draft a letter to J-LAC today thanking them for yesterday.
Yes.
I'd like Chris Doolin to look at it before I have you all sign it, just because he knows the language and, and what to send and what not to send. And so I did send that to him this morning, I never heard back from him, but once I get his okay, I'd like for each one of you to sign it from the full board. So I will get with you guys as soon as I get the okay from Chris to be able to do it.
You need to use them for December 3rd, because I'm gonna be out of the country for a while.
Yes, sir.
I do want to make mention, I got, did you get the email today that they sent out that we had accepted the audit and that it will be performed, and that they'll be getting with us on how the process is gonna work? But we got a formal letter.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I did. The letter was sent to the audit.
I wanted to let the commissioners, I let commissioners know that we did receive that today, the letter of confirmation of the process, but we'll let Commissioner Bennett go into that, but we, go ahead, Commissioner Bennett.
Sarah, I'm glad if you want me to go ahead and touch base on it. One, I too want to reiterate my appreciation for the entire board for going. I think it said a lot when all five of us and county staff took the time and effort to drive over there to address J-LAC. I think that was, to me, was very important, and I appreciate everybody standing in unity to, to move forward with it. You know, what was really interesting as we reviewed the report that was done by J-LAC's staff, to come to the realization that for the last 10 years of history that was pulled, the audit has been late nine years out of the 10 years, and the only one that was submitted on time was submitted on the very last date. If it had been submitted one day later, it would have been considered late. And so it was enlightening to see that this has not been just an issue right now, it's just we have finally become fully aware of the lack of, of functioning in that office, and why it's so absolutely essential that we move forward and support the audit. Not only have we lost $66,000 in sanctions from the year '22 audit, not only did we spend $55-plus thousand extra last year for the '23 audit that we should have had to, not only have we now spent 20-plus or so thousand dollars so far this year in additional expenses for it, that's still, that's still getting added up now. We're also spending taxpayers' dollars for legal fees. An attorney had to be there yesterday, and this is public dollars. So all of those things keep adding up to show how critical and important it is that we need this financial audit as well as the operational audit done. And so in addition to all of those fees I've already spoken about, now we're going to cost additional fees for the county to have to cover to actually do, have this audit performed, because they don't do it free. So we're gonna work through that, so I'm really disappointed with that of, of how much we've taken. You know, one of the things that just popped up on my Facebook feeds a few minutes ago was, it was 11 years ago today that I was sworn in for this role, and the clerk was sworn in exactly the same day. And to know that 10 of those last nine years, we didn't go back to C-11, but 10 of those years that offices failed to do their constitutional responsibility and submit those audits on times, very disappointing. But back to the point, yesterday, we were very successful in presenting a unified front and, and asking for the joint legislative auditing committee to perform an audit. They have agreed to do so, was a unanimous recommendation of 9-0 vote to say yes, and they made that direction to have the audit done, so now that scope of work will be prepared and sent back to us for review and with an understanding of the financial implications to us to, to perform that. How much is it gonna cost us to do it? So I, I don't know what the timeline will be on that, but that will be the next steps for it. I, I'm hopeful that her, will actually get turned in before they meet, before J-LAC meets again to issue sanctions. So I, I'm going to be optimistic that it will get done to do that. Commissioner, anything you can do to keep it moving? I know you are, but we appreciate that. But again, that was, yesterday was a really, a success, and I appreciate everybody's efforts to go and be there. I want to extend my appreciation also to Chris Doolin for him helping give us guidance on how to prepare and what to do, to be prepared to do that, to be efficient with it, and again, I'm gonna reiterate my support and appreciation to our representatives, both Representative Brandon as well as Senator Bradley for their support along the way for us to get there. So again, and that's, that is the summary as a whole, and I wanted to go through that so that the public would, would understand what we were talking about, because all of us were there doing it, but I reiterated all of that simply so that the public understood what we were talking about. Thanks, sir.
Anything else?
My only last thing I have is, is I was gonna mention it, but again, 11 years ago today, I started down this path. Well, actually, I got officially into the path, so it's amazing how time flies. And the last thing is wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week, and, and spend the time with your families and be thankful, especially as you look around, and some of us are, as we're getting older, we learn to appreciate our, our elders, our family members, our parents, our grandparents and things, and as kids, it was always just fun to get around and play with all the cousins, but you really need to take time and, and acknowledge the fact that our parents and grandparents will not be around forever, and enjoy the time with them while you can.
Commissioner Mobley. I don't, I don't have anything tonight. Commissioner Hartley.
I have nothing but happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Mann. Just recognize the county manager a little, and the CFO, Ms. Neville. Their collaboration is starting to reveal things and helping us move in the right direction, so we have confidence and the citizens of Baker County can have confidence in where we are and where we're going.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, that's what I basically was gonna say, is I appreciate all, all the commissioners going over and representing Baker County very well. I think it meant a lot to the J-LAC committee when they seen five commissioners stand in support of the audit. I didn't hear a lot of questions about why. If you read their, their summary, not ours, it was pretty obvious that Baker County needed an audit. And, and I was glad to see that the clerk of courts agreed that we need to audit to build confidence back into, sure, she agreed also, and I don't wanna take that away from her, that we needed to audit to give confidence back to Baker County constituents. And I want to say I appreciate the board, the staff, for attending the meeting. I go over there a lot, so y'all got to see what I get to see a lot of, but there wasn't nobody there, Harley, so y'all got blessed with that. But other than that, I just want to say everyone have a happy Thanksgiving, love on your grandbabies and your family, because we never know when it might be the last Thanksgiving for each, each one of us. That's right. And I've heard some bad news from some family members, not my family, but families close to us, what their struggles that they're going through right now with their family members and illnesses and sickness, and it's time to be thankful, not only for what God has blessed us with, but the help that he's given us and the wisdom he's given us. I don't know if we're so smart for being here, but the wisdom he's given us to be here, to serve the members of Baker County. And with that, I have nothing else. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.